All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dan Gorodnik. I'm the Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. We are joined for today's review session, November 28th, 2022, by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Bozorg Osorio Sorullo, Crowell, Dweck, Goodridge, Kurmani, and Marine. And if others join, we're only missing a couple. I will let you know when they are here. First, I would like to welcome everybody back from the Thanksgiving break. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday with family and friends. Before we get to today's agenda, I want to note that last Tuesday, just a few hours after this body voted to find that the City Council modifications to the Innovation Queens project were in scope, the full City Council approved the plan, thus enabling 3,100 new homes in Astoria with more than 1,400 of them income restricted. It was a big and complex project, but it got to a yes. A really important milestone and great news for Queens residents and for all residents of New York City. I wanted to again congratulate everyone who worked so hard to get us to a yes, from the team at City Planning, who worked for many years on this project, to the community, the mayor, council speaker, borough president, and local council member Julie Wong. Turning to today's review session, for certifications, we will first hear about a new housing proposal at 141-05 109th Avenue in South Jamaica, Queens, that would bring approximately 60 new homes, about 15 of them permanently affordable, to a residential community in our second-most populous borough. The four-story mixed-use project proposes to also provide ground-floor retail, office space, and a pre-kindergarten facility with outdoor space for students to learn and play. The second certification is a new proposal to bring 101 new homes to Richmond Valley on Cole Street on Staten Island South Shore. This area of New York City is seeing a significant amount of job growth, and this proposed development near the Outer Bridge and the Richmond Valley-Staten Island Railway Station stop would provide much-needed housing for working families. Among other items for review that we have previously considered, the City Council is asking us to make a scope determination for the mandatory inclusionary housing options that they have selected for two Brooklyn proposals. Livonia 4 in Brownsville, which proposes to bring almost 500 residential units, commercial and community facility space, and a project in Borum Hill that would include 300 homes, approximately a third of them income-restricted. Together, these projects would house more than 2,000 Brooklynites, so we will look at those for scope determination today. Finally, I will note on Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we're going to hold the commission's public meeting, where we will vote on projects across three boroughs and hold public hearings on two, including a home for the Reformed Temple of Forest Hills in Queens and a parking special permit for a project on West 28th Street in Manhattan. So with that introduction, Ryan, let's get right into it. Thank you as always.
Certainly. So just noting that the time is 1:03 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room here at 120 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is a certification for a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District 12. Our presenter is Andrew Seguin, and I also will note that Commissioner Ramperchat is recused on this item.
Andrew, before you go, let me also note that Commissioner Gold has joined us. Welcome. Thank you, and please proceed.
Good afternoon. This is a private application by Maupau Realty Corp. for a zoning map amendment from an R3A to an R6B zoning district with a C23 overlay and a corresponding text amendment mapping Mandatory Inclusionary Housing, or MIH. These actions would facilitate the development of a new four-story mixed-use building with approximately 60 dwelling units, of which 15 would be income-restricted. The project area is located at 141-05 109th Avenue in South Jamaica, Queens, Community District 12. The project area is located within the 2011 South Jamaica rezoning boundary, which sought to preserve the area's lower-density character while also allowing for moderate increases in residential and commercial density among major corridors. The project area was rezoned from an R32 to a contextual R3A district, which restricted the development of multifamily residential buildings. The project area is located approximately 600 feet east of the Van Wick Expressway, a highway that runs north-south through eastern Queens connecting JFK Airport to the Bronx. Downtown Jamaica is eight tenths of a mile north of the project area, an approximately 20-minute walk or 10-minute bus ride. The surrounding area is predominantly developed with two-story, one- and two-family residential buildings colored in light yellow on the map. Additionally, there are a few multifamily walk-up buildings in the immediate area, including one directly north of the development site, colored in dark yellow on the map. Colored in purple on the map, there are several industrial uses in the immediate vicinity, including a one-story building's material facility across the street from the project area. There are a limited number of nearby commercial uses, colored in red on the map. These uses include small restaurants and convenience stores. Nearby community facilities, colored in blue on the map, include numerous houses of worship. The Norrelli Hargreaves Playground, colored in green on the map, is located three blocks north from the project area. The Q40 and Q9 buses are located one block east and three blocks west of the project area, respectively. Both lines serve the downtown Jamaica Transit Hub and South Ocean Park. The project area is currently located in an R3A zoning district, which permits one- and two-family detached and semi-detached residential uses on two-to-three-story buildings. R3A districts permit floor area ratios of up to 0.5 for residential uses and 1.04 community facility uses, with maximum building heights of 35 feet. R3A districts are located in older, lower-density residential neighborhoods throughout New York, including College Point and Whitestone in Queens, City Island in the Bronx, and Port Richmond in Staten Island. Depicted by the dotted yellow outline on the map, the project area encompasses the southern half of Block 10068, comprising approximately 38,088 square feet. The project area is bounded by 109th Avenue to the south, 107th Road to the north, 139th Street to the west, and 142nd Street to the east. Shaded in teal on the map, the proposed development site is located on all but two of the project area's tax lots. The development site is wholly owned by the applicant and is currently approved by a materials storage yard and office. Depicted with pink outlines, two lots within the project area are not part of the development site. Lot 218, comprising approximately 4,000 square feet, is located at the western corner of the block and is currently approved by a two-story, two-family residential building. Lot 216, also comprising approximately 4,000 square feet, is unapproved and currently used as a materials yard. We'll now go on a brief walking tour of the project area. This photo looks northwest from the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street, currently comprising a materials yard. This section of the project area is proposed to host the entrances to the development site's residential and commercial spaces, as one of two entrances for its community facility space. This photo looks north from a point further down 109th Avenue, depicting the current location of the materials yard's office. The applicant has proposed an office space on the development to keep the tenant on-site. This photo looks southwest down 109th Avenue towards the Van Wick Expressway. The development site is located on the right side of the photo. This photo looks north down 142nd Street from the corner of 109th Avenue. The development site is located to the left of the street. This particular segment is proposed to serve as the entrance of the proposed community This photo looks east from the corner of 109th Avenue and 139th Street. The project area's two lots not included in the proposed development are located in the foreground of the image. The applicant is proposing to build a four-story, 45-foot-tall mixed-use building. The building would comprise 63,708 square feet of floor space and 60 dwelling units, of which 15 would be income-restricted. In addition to the residential uses, the development is proposed to contain a 5,950-square-foot pre-K facility, a 4,587-square-foot office, a 5,165-square-foot retail space, and 3,660 square feet of landscaped open space, all of which would be located at the ground floor. Floors 2 through 4 would be comprised of residential uses, comprising a total of 48,005 square feet. The proposed development's floor area ratio is 2.12. The development includes 28 accessory parking spaces and a below-grade, non-attended parking garage. This map depicts the proposed development's ground-floor plan. Entrances to the building's residential, shaded in yellow; office, shaded in pink; retail, shaded in orange; and parking, shaded in gray spaces, would all be provided along 109th Avenue. Access to the pre-K facility, shaded in blue, would be available via one entrance at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street, and another further down 142nd Street. The applicant, who owns a materials business that is currently located on the development site, would utilize the proposed office to maintain that space on-site. The retail space, which would be located adjacent to the office, has yet to be tenanted or proposed for a specific use. Located at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street, the community facility space is proposed to be tenanted by a pre-K establishment. A specific tenant has yet to be identified. The pre-K would also have access to 3,660 square feet of landscaped open space at the rear of the building. In addition to these uses, a publicly accessible 249-square-foot seating area would be provided at the corner of 109th Avenue and 142nd Street. The three existing curb cuts that are used for truck loading into the materials site would be replaced by a single 12-foot-wide curb cut that would serve as a parking garage at the far western edge of the development site on 109th Avenue. The elevation plan shown here looks north from 109th Avenue. The proposed development has a maximum building height of 45 feet. To facilitate the development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from an R3A district to an R6B district with a C23 commercial overlay on the project area. The R6B district would allow for a maximum FAR of 2.2 for residential uses, with the suitable provision of inclusionary housing, and 2.0 for community facility uses. The C23 commercial overlay would facilitate the development's office and retail space, allowing for a maximum commercial FAR of 2.0. The R6B is a contextual zoning district that allows for buildings to rise to a maximum height of five stories totaling 55 feet. Parking spaces are required for 50% of the number of market-rate dwelling units and 15% of income-restricted units. R6B districts are located in medium-density residential neighborhoods across the city, including Corona in Queens and Bedford-Stuyvesant in Brooklyn. In addition to the zoning map amendment, the applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to map MIH on the site pursuant to Option 1 or Option 2. Shaded in dark gray on the map, the MIH boundary would be co-terminus with the rezoning boundary. The applicant intends to utilize Option 1, which requires 25% of the residential floor space to be permanently income-restricted at an average of 60% of the area median income, or AMI. This action would result in approximately 15 permanently income-restricted units on the development site. For context, the AMI of the local area is $65,000 per year, which is lower than the borough overall, which has an AMI of approximately $72,000 per year. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, effective as of June 1st, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity because it would increase the project area's permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The applicant states that the proposal would produce new permanently income-restricted housing units in an area where housing production is not kept up with population growth, and create new ADA-combin housing, which would bolster options for independent living in the community. As noted in the previous slide, the AMI for the local area is approximately $65,000 per year. Using current-year U.S. HUD income limits, the applicant proposes to provide MIH units for households earning between 40% and 100% of area median income. For MIH units, citywide MIA rates are applied when determining income eligibility. The annual income at 40% AMI is approximately $37,000 to $53,000 per year for households ranging from one to four persons, with monthly rents ranging from approximately $930 to $1,200 a month for studios to two-bedroom units. The annual income at 100% AMI is approximately $93,000 to $133,000 per year for households ranging from one to four persons, with monthly rents ranging from approximately $23,40 to $3,000 for studios to two-bedroom units. As per the report, the local area's population is identified as approximately 54% black, 18% Hispanic/Latinx, 15% Asian, and 2% white. Between 2010 and 2020, the area saw an increase in Asian, Latinx, and white populations and a decrease in the black population. Summarize, Maupau Realty Corp. is seeking a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a four-story mixed-use building with 60 residential units, of which 15 would be income-restricted, 9,752 square feet of commercial space, and 5,950 square feet of community facility space. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to, in a moment, go to the Vice Chairman. Let me just start with a couple of quick ones from me. One is, you have several thousand square feet of landscaped open space in this proposal. Which of it is for the public and which of it is for the pre-K?
So the amount that I quoted, which would be totaling 3,660 square feet of landscaped open space, would be for the pre-K in the back, and then there's a couple hundred square feet on the corner next to the sidewalk, which would be open to the public.
Okay, so most of it is for the pre-K?
That's correct.
Okay. And you noted that this is in the South Jamaica district?
Yes. Community District 12 and the neighborhood's technically South Jamaica.
Okay, but it was contextually rezoned in 2011?
That's correct.
So we have a proposal here which is on the margins of an area which had previously been contextually rezoned. Tell us, from your view, how we should be thinking about proposals like this? Obviously, we have seen others where, you know, at some point in history, there had been a contextual rezoning, but now based on current need and also the existence of a relatively wide street and a modest change, there's an opportunity to add some housing here. But how should we think about this in this context, where we're dealing with, you know, a density increase on the margin of a previously contextually-zoned district?
So I can speak to probably a couple different points of that. First, as you mentioned, the street is relatively wide. It's relatively close to downtown Jamaica, has pretty good access to the freeway, served by a couple bus routes. The density that they are proposing is a little bit higher than the rest of the neighborhood, but I still think contextually appropriate for what would be a major street. More broadly than that, the 2011 did call for modest increases in density on these major streets. I think this particular development would probably still be within the spirit of that objective, if that makes sense.
Okay, Alexis.
Thank you very much. I do think that it's important that we're sort of reflecting on how we approach some of the contextual rezonings of the past administrations. In those cases, sometimes it was a matter of kind of aligning the existing context and existing neighborhood fabrics with zoning districts that kind of better aligned with them, that were created since 1961 zoning was established. A lot of the '61 zoning was established in a very broad-brush fashion, so the contextual rezonings kind of looked at how to align them with some of the newer districts that had been created. But we're a little bit less focused on how we could explore broad opportunities for growth. Now, given the housing crisis that we're currently trying to solve for, I think we really have to take a different look at how we are approaching rezoning boundaries, as well as, you know, areas like this, where typically it hasn't seen a lot of new development, but it's an area where we can be providing additional affordable housing opportunity or income-restricted housing opportunities in an area where we haven't typically seen a lot produced.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful. And I will also note that for the project site and the area in question, as I understand it, we're actually not changing it from the contextually prescribed outcome. It's actually a non-conforming manufacturing use today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chair. Well, my question is, I think, somewhat akin to the chair's. But let me say at the outset, I think, given the size of this parcel, I think the scale of this project is appropriate. But my question is a technical one. Is it the fact that this is a departure from an R3A, you know, one- and two-family housing? Is it the fact that this is a residential project? Does that take it out of the realm of what some might argue would be a spot zoning issue?
So I think in this particular context, because we're proposing, or the applicant's proposing a rezoning on the entirety of the block, I think that brings it a little bit outside the context of what would be... You know, there's multiple definitions of what a spot rezoning would be, but kind of because of the scope of the project area, in other words, what is being rezoned, I think that kind of brings it outside of the context of what would be considered under that definition.
That's right. Just adding that the department works with applicants to make the strongest case, and we think that the full-block front on a wider, busy street, you know, can call for and support some residential density along with a commercial overlay, and that seems appropriate and seems like a rational land-use argument can be made there.
Yeah, as I said, given the size of the parcel, I don't disagree with the outcome. I was just thinking about technical definitions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Dweck, followed by Commissioner Marine.
Thank you. So I'm certainly in line with the R6B. The C23 overlay, is this the... I don't see an existing commercial overlay in the area. Am I correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct.
So this would introduce a commercial strip into basically a residential, one block only, into a completely residential neighborhood.
That's correct. It's predominantly residential. There are some, especially when you go up Lakewood Avenue, which is, if you see on the map, kind of the one that spurs to the northeast, there are some existing commercial uses that are not under the pretext of a commercial overlay, but this would introduce a commercial overlay in a predominantly residential neighborhood.
What is the closest commercial overlay to the site? I couldn't find it on the maps that are provided.
I'll have to get back to you on that. I think there's one probably closer to stuff in Boulevard, which would be two, three blocks to the east, and then probably on the other side of Van Wick, there may be commercial overlays, but specifically speaking, I would have to look on that.
And a C23 allows grocery store or slight supermarket to be there?
Yeah, it would be sort of neighborhood commercial uses. It would also allow the applicant to maintain the office that's currently on-site, to be located on the project area.
So the office, basically, the C23 would legalize the office use?
That would be the primary intention.
But that wouldn't be required to be on the ground floor? That could be on the second floor. I think you can go up to second floor. Am I incorrect on that?
I believe in a mixed-use building, you have to have on the ground floor for a C2. Commercial has to be on the ground floor.
And from the second floor on on has to be residential?
Residential, yeah.
Got it, okay. On like a C24, which would...
Yeah, I think you may have to go up to a C4.
Got it.
Yeah, I think it's a C1.
Yeah, the C overlays limit the location.
The retail use, the retail use would actually, even though it's legalized, would be used for their offices.
So there's two specific uses. I'll pull up the ground-floor plan. So what you see in pink would be the office space that they would use for the existing business, and then kind of in the middle of the site would be a retail use. The applicant can speak more to it during the later stages of the public review process, but they have not yet to identify a specific tenant for that use.
Got it. I mean, you can understand my concern introducing a commercial overlay into a completely residential neighborhood and traffic and whatever it might be, so just something to look at as this moves along the process. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair Gorodnik. So first, can you just clarify for me real quick? I'm trying to understand, the back portion on 139th Street, that 100-foot distance, less than 100 feet, because the building ends at 80, so that 80-foot portion is not part of this development or this ownership?
Yeah, that's correct. Those are two separate lots owned by different owners.
The reason why I ask is because I know that, you know, this has been a question on the day as for a while now about spot zoning, and Ken brought it up, and I understand the question, but in this case, you know, you're reasoning the whole lot, so it's not like you're really doing a spot, because you're including other properties and lends to the argument of what you're saying. So I think that clarification needed to be made, because in the rhetoric, I did not understand that to be two separate lots, so that's something that's important to bring out so that the body understands that. The second thing is that I'd like to ask questions about the AMI. So you said that this neighborhood is an average of $74,000 a year in salary in terms of...
65.
65, excuse me. Thank you.
Yeah, about 65.
So what does that translate to in terms of AMI?
So if you go by the city's income, which would be 67, it's a little bit lower than the citywide.
67 is what, 100%, 80%, 90%?
67 would be 100% AMI for the city.
Okay.
Yep. And the borough overall is about 72, so it would be, the area's AMI would be below both the borough and sort of the citywide rates.
So that brings me to my question. Would the applicant consider then, you know, lowering the number of units at 100 AMI, because we're seeing that that is way below, at least $1,000 below the 100% AMI level?
That's a fair concern. We'll relay that to the applicant then.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. In a moment, I'm going to go to Commissioner Goodridge. I just want to note that we have been joined by Commissioner Ramperchat on Zoom. Commissioner Goodridge.
I have two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to note he's here. He is not participating today in this item. He is here on Zoom. He's not on this one. I forgot to call him out at the beginning of the meeting, but he is recused on this, so not participating. Sorry, Commissioner Goodridge. Sorry to create chaos.
So spot rezoning probably has a range of definitions, depending on who you ask, but typically when people refer to spot rezoning, I would say they're usually referring to rezoning maybe one individual lot, rather than sort of a larger amalgamation of neighboring lots, something that would be a little bit more strategic and high-level in nature, if that makes sense. And then a contextual district versus sort of like your standard district, like you can say an R6 versus an R6B, what you would see here is that typically the bulk provisions that would be mandated by the R6B district create a building envelope that would be more, or there's less flexibility on it, right? So when you have like a regular R6, there's sort of a wider range of how tall you can build, you know, what kind of setbacks you can provide, whereas in R6B, it's a little bit more confined, and it creates a little bit more prescribed envelope that would be more in context with the surrounding developments, if that makes sense.
And we're trying to create a building that would mesh. That would be, if there's a skyscraper, I'm shown, and then for it to be contextual rezoning for that not to happen, for it to be skyscraper because it...
Oh, okay. Yeah, so a contextual rezoning, like what they did in 2011 in South Jamaica, that would... The intention of it was to essentially align the zoning districts with what is more accurately existing on the ground, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I believe Susan wants to address spot zoning.
I'm going to add something on spot zoning. Just because it does mean lots of different things to lots of different people, but it's actually a very specific legal term, and because spot zoning is not allowed, it's, I think, important to be very precise about what it means. So spot zoning really means a zoning decision that is not consistent with a rational land-use plan, or doesn't have a land-use rationale behind it, and it doesn't... We can rezone, and we can make land-use decisions on single pieces of property or amalgamations. It's not really about the geographic size, it's about the rationale and the consistency of the rationale with a larger land-use plan.
Thank you. And my actual question is, I know we've been talking about a residential neighborhood, and I think the way I'm looking at it in terms of the political viewpoint is, we often have, we talk about food deserts and, you know, having concentrated poverty and not having enough access to different, you know, resources. And so I guess what I'm picking up is that having retail, it's a residence, my view, is a bad thing, and I guess I'm wondering why. I don't know, is it the foot traffic? Is it that it brings in different people? Um, is it that it brings in different people who aren't from the neighborhood? Um, I'm, I'm actually just wondering, because I'm sensing that, you know, this is negative that might get community pushback, and I'm wondering why.
Yeah, so do you have a?
No, no, I was gonna respond in part.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I don't know the answer.
When I was at the council, one of the complaints that we heard frequently from communities was that food stores brought in rats, rodents, and brought in traffic, the delivery of the goods to the store was a big problem for many residential communities, because the trucks come in, and generally, particularly with a smaller retail space, the trucks have to either back in or back out. So whatever the street is, it is frequently tied up with the deliveries, and residents and others can't get through. So for many, the people who are the most local, the benefits of the store are outweighed by what they perceive as the negative impacts that they will bear.
Yeah, and I think in, in this particular context, again, they haven't identified a specific retail tenant, um, but, you know, the, the gamut of concerns that we do hear on a day-to-day basis are relatively aligned with that. Um, the traffic impacts, and then, you know, some of the broader environmental impacts, so to speak.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the presentation. Just a quick confirmation question on, in terms of the, um, UPK space, just on the map that it said UPK, and then in some of the text, it's just says, um, doesn't have the universal pre-K, so just wanna confirm that it's a UPK site, or intended to be a UPK site as opposed to like a private daycare.
I think that's the intention, and I'll let the applicant clarify that, um, but to my understanding, they haven't identified a specific tenant or gone through any of the specific processes to sort of solidify that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, a, a concern of mine when we do M I H and other housing is that we tend to end up with mostly one-bedroom apartments. And in this case also, we're gonna have twenty-seven one-bedroom apartments. We have more two-bedroom apartments, but there's only three, three-bed, family-sized apartments. Is there, I know that's not part of M I H, but to the extent that we can encourage developers to look at family-sized apartments, I would be appreciative, because the one-bedroom apartments are always, the predominant one-bedroom studios tend to be the predominant pattern for the M I H apartments.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. Um, I think at least within the Queen's Office, we're always trying to encourage applicants to sort of diversify their unit mix, um, provide a mix that's more accommodating to a broader diversity of family types, um, so we will relay that to the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Cirulo?
So, just, um, I guess there are two. One is more general in the sense of, since obviously this is the beginning of the public review process for this project, but I'm just wondering if, I mean, this is the Speaker's district, and, um, this is quite a, quite a leap, we'll, we'll say, from what the underlying zoning is to the, to the change. Um, do we have any sense, has the applicant, or has the department in any meetings that have taken place prior to today, had any feedback from the community on where they might be on this? I mean, I realize we'll, we'll learn where they are, but what, what are we foreseeing if we know already in terms of this application?
So, to my understanding, and again, we'll let the applicant confirm that, they have not, um, done any engagement with the community board or other members of the community specifically, um, but in terms of this community and the, the concerns that we often hear, it usually relates to parking, and then, um, flood infrastructure, this, this area is very constrained in the amount of stormwater capacity it has, so oftentimes when the community board hears applications, um, they often ask about that.
Okay, and, and that ma, that makes sense. Um, I, so the, the other thing I'm, I'm sort of thinking about, and I don't have, I don't have my iPad, so I, I'm trying to do some of this on my phone, but I, are we approving this project? I know there's distinctions between sometimes approving the project itself and what is being brought to us as the plan versus the zoning and the map change, and, and those elements of our function. The reason I ask that is because in R six, what, what else could be built here if we are not locking this project in, let's say through this entire process, and everyone loves this, and, and, and we think this is a fantastic thing, and I'm not weighing in on how I feel about this at all, I'm really interested to hear what the community has to say about this, but what are we approving at the end? Just for my sake, because I can't look it up. Are we approving the project, or are we approving the R six B? Does that mean that after approval, they could turn this four-story building into something else? And so I'm just trying to get that, as we begin this process, just trying to understand through it, without doing a little more homework of my own, what, what we'll be doing.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, thanks for asking. Um, in terms of what we would be approving through this process, it would be the zoning change, right? So we would be approving, um, the R six B zoning district over the project area generally with the C two three commercial overlay.
Mm-hmm.
And then obviously mandatory inclusionary housing would be mapped in the entirety of the site, so not just the development site that the applicant controls, but also the neighboring sites would be subject to both that and the, the new zoning regulations.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the development site, um, itself and, and what the applicant is proposing, um, in this process, that would not necessarily be locked in hypothetically.
Sure.
So it would be more along the lines of the zoning district itself and the M I H.
Okay, that, that's what I expected, but I wasn't sure if I was missing something in this, so I guess the question is, and this would be helpful as we move through the process, is to understand what else could potentially go here or be built here that we would not be weighing in on in this process, that we should know about so that when we're interacting with the applicant, we could be at least getting some assurances, as I'm sure the community will want in this process, and the Speaker herself as, as the representative of this district, wh- where that will, how that will all play out.
So I can, I can probably make a couple of points regarding that at this point. Uh, one would be sort of the bulk, like the, the actual development of what the applicant is proposing here versus sort of like what the maximum would be under the underlying new zoning regulations. They're getting pretty close to like what the maximum floor area ratio would be, they're a little bit under what the maximum height would be, um, they're providing, I think, one more parking space than what would be required. So they're, they're close to sort of the max there. Um, in terms of the range of uses, I'd have to go back and look at sort of the specific, um, range of uses that would be permitted under the C two three overlay.
Yeah.
But again, it's more like everyday commercial uses, like your corner stores, your dry cleaners, um, things like after-school centers, uh, things like that.
Well, I, and I appreciate that, I mean, that's actually more, that's a comforting reality, um, compared to like, you know, whatever, something that wouldn't be that close to being what could be built there in terms of bulk and height and all of that and use. Um, but it will be interesting to learn more about it as we, as we go through the process, but I appreciate the insight to, on that.
And I will note too, that sort of in the environmental review process, um, they do look at, you know, what they would call the reasonable worst-case development scenario, in other words, out of anything that they could build and what the zoning that they're proposing is allowing, um, what is sort of the max of that? Um, and that, that's kind of been vetted through, through the environmental, um, the EAS that's been submitted along with this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duque.
Thank you. Just one, one last question from, from me. Is this the minimum increase that would trigger M I H?
Um, no.
I believe so, yeah.
In terms of a zoning district?
Yeah, yeah. The, the R six B is, I believe, the lowest district that, that even has M I H in the, in the, um, zoning provision. If, if the council were to knock this down, should it be approved and go through a process, then it would not be subject to M I H. It, it, like an R five D or something like that would be the next sort of step down, you know, that does not have an M I H, uh. All right, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for that. Actually, both important points, that one and Commissioner Cirulo's, and a good reminder for all of us when we're changing a zoning district, we are defining what can go there, we're not necessarily, uh, limiting to what is on the pictures in front of us, and I think that's a worthy reminder. There are some circumstances in which we actually are evaluating the very specific building before us, but when we're doing a straight-up zoning change like this one, we are setting the outer boundary of what can be accomplished, uh, and that is what we're looking at here. Um, so thank you very much, uh, for that. Um, seeing other questions at the moment, um, this item is certified, and we will certainly see it, and you through the process, thank you for the terrific presentation.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next item, and for this one, uh, we will be joined by Commissioner Rampershead on Zoom, uh, and, um, Ryan, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, so this is our second item on our agenda. It's a certification of an amendment to the city map and a referral, uh, of some special south Richmond district actions, uh, in Staten Island Community District Three, and our presenter is Danny Vera.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as Ryan said, I am presenting the Coal Street Development Project. This is a private application seeking a change in the city map and several non-youler actions pursuant to the Special South Richmond Development District, including authorizations to facilitate tree removal and modifications of topography, CPC certification for a zoning lot subdivision, and a chair certification for school seats. The actions would facilitate new map public streets and a residential development consisting of forty-eight two-family homes and five single-family homes for a total of one hundred and one units and over two hundred and seventeen thousand square feet of total floor area at the terminus of Coal Street in the Richmond Valley Neighborhood in Staten Island's Community District Three. Non-youler actions I mentioned earlier are required because the area is mapped within the Special South Richmond Development District, which was established in nineteen seventy-five and is one of three, um, large special zoning districts that encompass a significant portion of Staten Island. The others are the Special Hillside Preservation District and the Special Natural Area District. Each special district has its own unique regulations, but all share common goals, including guiding future development, public improvement, and natural and recreational resources on Staten Island. The department is currently working with local stakeholders to update these rules to make them more streamlined for local property owners, um, while also strengthening the rules to ensure that large project sites, such as the one that's subject to this application, achieve the district goals effectively. The project area is an approximately fifteen-acre site consisting of one zoning lot and seventeen tax lots. The project site is undeveloped and largely characterized by vacant forested areas, which are adjacent to the Mill Creek Blue Belt located east and south of the project site. The Blue Belt program is operated by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, D E P for short, and preserves natural drainage corridors, including streams, ponds, and wetlands, and enhances them to perform their functions of managing stormwater runoff. The surrounding area is developed predominantly with single and two-family detached and semi-detached homes. This is consistent with the mapped R three X district, which permits, permits low-density residential homes. There are nearby commercial areas along Page Avenue and Veterans Road West to the west and north respectively, containing big box and strip mall-style retail stores mapped in an M one-one zoning district, which permits light industrial and commercial uses up to a floor area of one point zero. Transportation access to the site includes nearby vehicular entrances to the West Shore Expressway and Korean War Veterans Parkway. The Staten Island Railway, um, has a Richmond Valley Station, which is located approximately three hundred feet south of the project site, and there's an express bus stop just located south, um, just located south of the project site along Amboy Road. The site contains a range of natural features, including heavily wooded areas containing over thirteen hundred trees, and there's also areas of significant topographical changes resulting in a grade change of forty feet between the lot lines. Freshwater Wetland and adjacent areas are located on the site along the eastern and southwest lot lines near the Mill Creek Blue Belt. If this land use action is approved, the applicant intends to subdivide the existing zoning lot into fifty-two zoning lots and develop fifty-three new homes for a total of a hundred and one residential units and over two hundred and seventeen thousand square feet of new residential floor area, with in-ground pools in the rear yard of most of the homes. To provide access to, and sewer connections to these homes, the proposal includes the construction of three new public streets, Blue Belt Drive, Cool Court, Lookout Court, and an extension of Coal Street. After the streets are constructed, ownership will be transferred to the City of New York. Additionally, there will be a twenty-foot-wide F D N Y access easement that provides emergency access, access between Blue Belt Drive and Cool Court. The development project incorporates three preservation and public space areas located along the eastern lot line and the southeast and southwest corners of the site. These are intended to preserve existing natural features, including wetlands, trees, and topography, and provide public amenities in accordance with the Special South Richmond Development District goals. It is anticipated that these areas will also contain stormwater management measures such as R I P rap based upon ongoing conversations between the applicant team and D E P in order to meet D E P stormwater regulations. The public recreation spaces in the area will be open to the public daily from dawn to dusk, and this includes a wooden platform that extends along the easternmost lot line and provides benches and views of the neighboring natural areas, a wooden platform at the southeast corner of the site providing overlook of the adjacent wetlands, and a pod, garden, and lawn area located at the intersection of Coal Street and Weiner Street. The F D N Y access easement will also be constructed with geo-blocked pervious grass pavers and serve a dual purpose, providing F D N Y access and a pathway for biking and pedestrians. In total, these areas are over eighty-four thousand, thousand square feet, or about thirteen percent of the lot, and will be maintained by a homeowners association. In the Special South Richmond Development District, authorizations are required to modify certain natural features, including trees and topography. And this is all outside of building footprints, driveways, and required parking. The development would require, will result in the removal of nine hundred and seventy-one existing on-site trees, of which two hundred and ninety-six would require an authorization that is subject to this application. Two hundred and seventy-three trees, new trees will be planted to meet the minimum tree planting requirements on each of the proposed zoning lots. The zoomed-in image of, of this lot on the site plan, as shown on the, on the slide, shows an example, uh, of a tree removal subject to a South Richmond authorization, and also as a right tree removal that's permitted by zoning. Topographic modifications on this site as part of the proposal include over thirty thousand cubic yards of topography removal, in other words, cut, and almost twenty-nine thousand cubic yards of fill over the existing topography, and these vary, uh, between two and ten feet in certain areas. The applicant incorporated design elements to minimize topographical modifications and blend the proposed development into the surrounding natural topography. The homes are stepped vertically to work within the natural contours, and some buildings have split and elevated foundations. This is illustrated by unit number forty-six on the slide. To summarize, the requested actions include a change in the city map, South Richmond authorization to modify trees and topography, a certification for a zoning lot subdivision, and a chair certification for school seats. This would all facilitate new map public streets, a subdivision of the existing zoning lot into fifty-two new zoning lots, and the construction of fifty-three new homes for a total of a hundred and one residential units with in-ground pools in, in the rear yard of most of the homes. Happy to take any questions at this time.
Great, thank you very much. I'm gonna go first to Commissioner Benjamin, uh, and then we'll see who else, uh, has questions. Um, but before we do, let me just jump in with a couple of clarifying points. Um, on the authorization for tree removal, on the slide that you showed us, some trees to be removed require an authorization, some can be done as a right. Is that correct?
Correct.
And within this proposal, um, two hundred and ninety-six require an authorization, but nine hundred and seventy-one are being removed in total, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, okay, uh, and I'm gonna ask you at the end to say a little bit about some concepts that are kicking around in our Staten Island office about how to make some of this a little more simple, but I'm gonna save that for the end, but I'm gonna go to Commissioner Benjamin first.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, but one ties directly into the Chair's question, which is, is it possible to provide a map of the trees that are being removed and their location, and where trees are being replanted, um, and the kind of general PC and size of the replantings?
Absolutely, as part of the- Absolutely. As part of the application requirements, the applicant team is required to provide locations of where the trees are being removed and planted, so we can recirculate it, make sure that's clear, and also a tree schedule that lists all the proposed trees and the species and their size.
Okay. Because I also wanted to make sure that they're not removing, not make sure. I also wanted to determine whether they are removing trees in order to facilitate the construction during the construction phase as opposed to removing trees for the permanent housing.
Right. So, they need to show every single tree that's being removed as part of either the construction or the development. So, that's all reflected, and there's a tree drawing that's in the application. So, that's everything that's going to be removed.
Because it wasn't in my packet, so I assume you have it, but we don't.
Happy to recirculate that. And in fact, it's actually indicated here, but it's so, it's a big site, and it's very small, so we could ask the applicant team to...
And it's really small on my iPad.
Definitely.
And number two, the map changes. Without the map changes, how many houses could be built? Because some of them would not be on a map street if we didn't map these streets.
Correct. Correct.
So, what would the development maximum potential be if we just left the street pattern as-is?
Correct. So, currently, without mapping the streets, the only part that's actually considered mapped is basically this little extension of Coal Street. That's right there. So, essentially, they could develop homes around Coal Street, and that's the extent of it. The rest of it is currently undeveloped and does not contain any map streets.
The answer to that is also a little tricky. Historically, projects like this on Staten Island have gone to the BSA and sought a General City Law Thirty-Six waiver. They tend to not build their streets, those private streets, to the same standards that are required, and so they actually could maybe fit a few more houses on this site under that regime. I believe there's an application for that at the board. We could even find out what that is. Just to say that, and perhaps not, I'll just say it, the department thinks that the mapping of a street is a better planning tool in the long run for projects like this.
And lastly, from me at least, will the map streets have city sewers underneath them, or will Staten Island continue in their current regime of private waste treatment?
Yes. The applicant intends to propose, and it's indicated on their drawings, that sewers would be underneath the map streets. They have been having discussions with DEP for some time now, and those conversations continue, but there are anticipated sewers underneath the streets.
And is there city budget money for these sewers, or is the applicant going to pay for them?
So, the applicant intends to fully construct out the streets and build out the street infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Hi. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Just following up, it's funny, I guess, three of us landed on the tree issue, with the thought thereof. But I guess, as I understand it from the reading, so they have to take down nine-hundred-and-seventy-one, and some of these are more, let's say, topographical, right, to allow for the construction so that the streets can be more level. It sounds like they need permission for, you know, almost three-hundred of them, but would be interested, and maybe it's not something you've discussed just yet, but maybe it is worth discussing with the applicant, conceptually, what they might be proposing for, yeah, obviously, we're taking down three-hundred, we're putting three-hundred back up, but those three-hundred have to be put back up. But the other seven-hundred that are being lost, you know, perhaps in some of those areas that are becoming more public, they have ideas for adding some trees, or perhaps, I know, in some other areas of the city, if you take down a tree, you can, you know, pay into a fund of the city where a tree can be planted in a park or somewhere. So, would just, would be interested, I don't know if you've had those discussions with them, but if you haven't, would be interested to hear, you know, sort of their thoughts there, because I do think that's something that is important, and I think to several of us, it sounds like.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. So, there's nothing currently in Special South Richmond Development District regulations that indicate that if you take down this amount of trees, you have to plant somewhere else. There are regulations there, and I mentioned that the trees that are proposed to be planted is that, okay, yes, you can take down the trees, but you have to meet your underlying tree planting requirement, which is why they're actually planting all those trees in order, so they could be there. So, again, going back to the South Richmond goals, it's about balancing, you know, land use development and, you know, natural features on site. So, it's sort of trying to find that right balance.
No, no, I get that a hundred percent, and I recognize that obviously trees have to be moved for the development, but at the same time, it's that balance of, you know, basically, the applicant's proposing to do, essentially, the bare minimum. And so, perhaps, you know, there might be a thought there to do more. And then, I guess, the second question is on school seats. I guess, there's mention in there that school construction says, you know, we have them. If you could elaborate a little bit, would be helpful, it sounds like. And if we think about a hundred homes, it's, you know, on average, probably, you know, if we say three kids per house, it's three, or three-hundred-and-fifty seats, and just anything we know on that, if they're available today, or if that requires some building as well.
Right. So, essentially, it's a certification, it's a chair certification, which is why it doesn't usually come to you all, but it's essentially to certify that there's enough school capacity. And it's actually a somewhat antiquated procedural. It's very procedural, in fact. It's been in the rule since nineteen seventy-five, and currently, the School Construction Authority has a sort of different approach. So, it's very procedural in terms of, like, is there capacity here, and sort of, and that's the extent of it. There's no, you know, there's no issues from there. So, it's sort of a very procedural thing, and that's generally what we see.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Carmody?
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just a question, I mean, I didn't see this in the materials. Is there a guesstimate of the average purchase price of the homes, or what that will be?
I am not sure, but I'm sure the applicant team gets to speak to that when it gets back from a...
Thanks. And then, just on the modifications of existing topography, I think, like, I would, because I don't know about this, would be interested to know what effect creating underground pools would have on the surrounding wetland area. So, in addition to the tree removal, what are the environmental impacts of that kind of, not just the construction, but then the chemicals and what that might mean?
Oh, totally, totally. And in terms of just topography, that's part of the findings of the authorization. You need to ensure that you're, you know, managing your stormwater, and, you know, you're not trying to blend into the surrounding topography and everything like that. So, in terms of managing the chemicals and everything, maybe the applicant team could speak to that a little bit. Usually, how that comes into play is making sure that they have the right sewer connection to them, so they can drain out and drain back in as such. But the applicant team could most literally speak to that a little bit more. The one thing I'll note is that the pools, and essentially, the entire development itself is outside the wetland-adjacent area, so the pools aren't in there. So, at least, that's beneficial.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I was looking at the EAS, and the WRP is very concise, and it's very interesting to see and to basically see kind of what the applicant has done to document some of the observations that you've made, like, for example, the fact that it's outside of the wetland area. But I, to build on Commissioner Gold's point, because this is within an ecological, recognized ecological complex, can we, as the City's Coastal Commission, require additional conservation, environmental protection provisions? For example, to be fully consistent and to be fair, to honor what the applicant is saying under Policies Four, Natural Resources, and Five, Water Quality, can we actually sort of encourage, and I don't know if we can do more than that, something of what Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Carmody were suggesting?
Yeah. I mean, something I'll say is definitely within the findings of the authorizations for tree removal and modification of topography, it very much speaks to the goals of the district and modification of natural features. So, from my perspective, it seems like that falls all within the realm of what the findings of the authorizations are for, within the sort of discretionary action. So, based on the information on the EAS, you know, I feel that it's within the scope of the authorizations being...
Cool. Thank you, thank you. Something, I think it would be very interesting to understand how the applicant is planning to address that. And then, I have another quick question, which is more like, I mean, given the fact that DEC will have to provide some specific permit here, I'm wondering if, if, if you can explain a little bit, when does that happen? When does the applicant have to apply for stormwater pollution prevention or create a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and when does the state pollution discharge elimination system, sort of like general permitting process, start? Is that something that happens in parallel, or when do we know that the, essentially, the application is meeting the environmental requirements?
Right. I probably can't speak to all the different DEC permitting that they might need, and maybe when it comes back, we could provide a little bit more information, or the applicant team could speak to that. I know, in terms of the wetland areas, they're actually completely, currently completely outside of it, so they actually don't even need a permit from DEC from that perspective, because the entirety of the development is outside the wetland-adjacent area. That being said, there, as I mentioned about the, so essentially, the entire, I'm going to flip back to, essentially, the gray area, oh, it's not as gray on there, but the, like, the top part of the lot is essentially the wetland-adjacent area, so they're staying outside of it. There might be some, based on ongoing conversations with DEP, some things that they need to put into the wetland-adjacent area to mitigate stormwater runoff. So, at that point, they might need additional, like, DEC application with DEC and permits associated. So, that's still ongoing with DEC. So, potential for there, and I think when it comes to, we could speak to any other, you know, other application or permits that the applicant team thinks they'll need from DEC.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just, it's, from my understanding also, it's not just the proximity, but also the fact that the amount of soil that will be disturbed is larger than one acre, and given the proximity, then some of these triggers actually may be in place.
Right. Yeah. I can't speak to them too fully in terms of the DEC, but we're happy to follow up with more if that triggers anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Ramperstad on Zoom, to be followed by Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you for the presentation. Sorry, couldn't be there in person. I just had one quick question with regards to that FDNY access road at the rear. That's a road I assume is going to be open at all times. Will, actually, will there also be signs posted, like, no cars parked, to be parked there, like, no standing? Because this is an open street, right?
I'll follow up on this. I believe there is some sort of gate there that could be easily sort of, like, opened, but I could definitely follow up on that one when it comes back. But my, the applicant team indicated that it would be open to the public, because, again, it serves a dual purpose. It's there for bicyclists and pedestrians, so it will be open. To my understanding, it is not open for other vehicles, but I could definitely confirm that when it comes back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
I was just going to clarify for Commissioner Osorio, that the Speedies One and Two are issued by DEP, and you don't get to hook up to the sewers. That's why I'd asked about the sewers. You don't get to hook up until after you have an approved Speedies. So, it can happen anywhere along the process, but the longer you delay, the more problematic it can become.
Thank you, Commissioner. Back to you, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you. I had another quick question, or maybe just something to point out for further discussion, which is, given sort of like the, I just wanted to understand, in terms of public access to the waterfront and the proximity to the creek, to what extent will this be promoting it? I know that the WRP very clearly says that it doesn't, that this is not relevant, but I would love to know if, it sounds like it will be potentially, or could be potentially increasing or encouraging or maintaining public access to that part of the waterfront, and would love to hear more about that.
Yeah, no, totally. And that was a lot of the conversations that we had with the applicant team on this. There's a lot of existing natural features on the site, and thinking about strategically where it's best to do preservation areas in line with the Special South Richmond Development District goals. And through those conversations, the applicant team proposed this preservation and public space area that's along the top part of the site, which is adjacent to the Mill Creek Blue Belt. So, as I mentioned earlier, too, there's going to be several benches and overlooks of the Blue Belt. So, there develops a connection between the development sites and the adjacent Blue Belt, along with providing public space areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bozorg?
I'm curious just to generally understand, and maybe the Chair, this is what you were talking about, about speaking at some of our, speaking to some of the things the Staten Island Office is grappling with, but I'm struggling with how to even consider a project like this when it comes to the trade-off of the approvals they're looking for and the public benefit. And when it comes to kind of multi-family housing and rental housing, we have this framework, as imperfect as it may be, that when you're seeking approvals for more land use or higher, you know, density, that you have to contribute something to the affordable housing crisis. We don't really have that kind of framework here, and I don't know if Commissioner Osorio, that's part of what you're getting at with encouraging or requiring the applicant to be contributing to other parts of what's happening in the area. But I'm struggling with how to consider this when there seems to be so much, in other boroughs, too. It's like, we're trying to find as many possible units often to contribute to the housing crisis when building on really small, often small parcels. So, it's a little bit, and I know Staten Island's unique, but just curious how the department's thinking about balancing this with the very different conversations we're having in other boroughs about the housing crisis.
Definitely. And I guess the other unique part about the site is that it's actually relatively close to a Staten Island Railway station, so it actually is kind of a good...
And there's not much of an as-of-right scenario, I'm taking...
Well, this is, as a matter of zoning, this is as-of-right.
As a matter of zoning, but without these approvals, there's no progress.
That really is, that really is the difference between this and the things that we see in other places, is that the private owner here, they're not seeking an upzoning. They are seeking the authorizations just to be able to remove some trees and to subdivide lots and to map streets. So, yeah, because it's in a special district within one of three special districts in the borough of Staten Island. So, it is a special, this is a unique sort of a beast when we deal with projects in Staten Island. In fact, I think, Danny, it might be worth your explaining a little bit as to, you know, how, you know, well, you should certainly answer the Commissioner's question, and also to note how we're thinking about maybe even reforming some of this, because some of it really does not fit, in our view, within the Department of City Planning, and we think we can streamline some of this to make it actually easier for homeowners and also to continue to accomplish the goals of preservation.
Yeah. Just to circle back on the original question, too, the thing I'll note is it's an R-three-X district, which only permits single- and two-family homes, and in fact, there's another sort of mini-district within the South Richmond that would actually require larger lots for a good majority of the site. So, in fact, there's sort of more area that's required for each zoning lot that's being proposed. But in terms of the effort that where our office is leading, and the department is leading, in terms of reforming the, really, each special district and looking at them each very carefully, but the unique part is that the authorizations that they're seeking as part of this application are the same authorizations that a single-family home with a pool in their backyard would seek, or, you know, just to take down one tree. So, there's a little bit of a weird off-balance between, you know, a site like this, which is well-deserved of a review process by the commission, in contrast to some of these smaller applications, that there isn't really any other larger land use and zoning complexity to it, aside from, you know, maybe taking down a tree to put in, you know, a patio area or something like that. So, we're, our office is kind of leading efforts to speak with local stakeholders to think about how we can make these rules clearer. It's been over thirty years since these rules haven't been in place, so make it clearer to local property owners and streamline in some areas, but also, again, like, making sure that they achieve the goals of the district as, you know, initially conceived back in, you know, nineteen seventy-five and earlier than that, too.
Just some context for the review of these. This is only being discussed today because of the mapping action. This is a full U-LARP. Typically, South Richmond projects, the material they're given to you, I think Commissioner Cirillo gets a briefing with the Staten Island Office, and then, you know, based on the findings, which the findings are pretty straightforward, it's, you know, it's based on tree counts and, you know, amounts of property cut and filled, and then we recommend approval. And typically, if it's a single-family home, you know, somebody put in a pool, you know, why wouldn't we just sort of streamline that? But on larger sites like this, even absent the mapping action, you know, we think that it deserves the review.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Osorio? Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Osorio?
Uh, thank you, Chair. No, I just wanted to, to, eh, I appreciate the, the response. And I, I think that that final reflection is very useful in terms of how do we approach these types of revisions. Just wanted to clarify to Commissioner Bozorg that my comments are not geared toward exploring how this may contribute to our goals, but they're actually geared to understand how we're, how the proposal is actually compliant with the Waterfront Revitalization Program, which is a regulatory framework created to determine whether this is actually consistent with city policy.
Okay, got it.
And, and so, but I, I really appreciate sort of the, the question and the comment and, and, and really invited all of us to think about how can we use the W R P in, in, in connection to this citywide goal of, you know, increasing opportunities for affordable housing. But, but at the same time, eh, understanding where are the conflicts and where are the potential synergies with the W R P?
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, okay, with that.
I think we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, you do have questions. Commissioner Goodrich?
Um, so. I'm gonna look it up on Google, Tottenville, right?
Um, it is just northeast of Tottenville a little bit. Um, I don't think I have, oh, I have it up, okay. Um, it is like, um, really close to the Outer Bridge Crossing for, for, um.
This is my only question, I think some of. Um, in, of, was it Staten Island Office, or anything? Like, when you look at the Google map, they're just there and then they're in, probably.
Yeah, they're most likely will, um, cause I'm sure they're, I mean, I, you know, I would, I would imagine some of them are relative. I'm sorry?
No, there is. It's a full U L E R P. Oh, okay, oh, okay, all right.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, it will go to the community, they'll go to the commuter board and they will definitely, um, express their opinion. As you can imagine, those owners are used to seeing a forested area to their, to their rear yard. And that would be definitely a, a change for them, but, um, they will definitely speak to that.
We will look forward to the public hearing, uh, and, um, I don't see other questions or comments. So Danny, thank you very much. This item for Cole Street is certified. And we're gonna move on to our next one, but thank you very much, Danny.
The third item on our agenda is a referral of a non-U L E R P modification of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Azka Mahadine.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Parker Fifty-Seven L S C for a non-U L E R P modification to a previously approved special permit. The proposed action will enable design changes to a publicly accessible through-block arcade within what is now known as the Thompson Central Park Hotel on West Fifty-Sixth Street in the Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Five. The images are right shows the surrounding context looking northwest at the subject building outlined in yellow. The building commonly known as Parker Hotel is a forty-story mixed-use building with a ground-floor retail located mid-block with frontage on both West Fifty-Sixth Street and West Fifty- Seventh Street, between Sixth and Seventh Avenue. Just outside the surrounding context, you can see Central Park located two blocks north. The sounding area supports a high-density neighborhood typical of Midtown Manhattan. The building height is, in the area, ranged from eighteen to forty-nine stories on Sixth Avenue and twelve to twenty-seven stories on Seventh Avenue. There are two subway stations on the same block as the development site. The West, the Fifty- Seventh Street, Seventh Avenue Station providing access to the N, Q, R, and W lines, located at the corner of Seventh Avenue and Fifty- Seventh Street, and Fifty- Seventh Street Station providing access to the F line located at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Fifty- Seventh Street. The predominant land use within the surrounding area is commercial and some residential with ground-floor retail. The cross-streets mostly contain residential uses with commercial use on the ground floor and in approximately five to six-story buildings with some exceptions, including the twenty-three-story building directly across the zoning lot on West Fifty-Sixth Street. The prevailing land use on the avenues is a combination of commercial uses, hotels, museums, theaters, and churches. There are five zoning districts within the surrounding area, three of which intersect the development site, effectively splitting its zoning. Most of the surrounding area below West Fifty-Eighth Street is within the Special Midtown District. The R ten H District extends along Central Park South with C five-one District running along West Fifty-Eighth Street below it. District C five-three is mapped along West Fifty- Seventh Street along, starting to the east of Seventh Avenue and extending east beyond Sixth Avenue. The C six-six District is mapped along Seventh Avenue and Sixth Avenue extending south with a portion of the blocks between the two avenues mapped with a C six-six-point-five District. The narrow portion of the zoning lot fronting on West Fifty- Seventh Street is within the C five-three zoning district. And the remainder of the lot fronting on West Fifty-Sixth Street is split between C six-six and the C six-one dash six-point-five zoning districts with a measure of use falling within the C six dash C six-point-five district. Development side is also within the Special Midtown District. There are several privately-owned public spaces within the surrounding area. Of note is this six-block chain of publicly accessible through-block connections running from West Fifty-first Street to Fifty- Seventh Street between Seventh and Sixth Avenue. The internal through-blocker connections are highlighted here in purple. The through-block arcade on development side highlighted here in yellow is part of the six-block connection, providing an alternate connection between Fifty-Sixth and Fifty- Seventh Streets. The proposed project introduced improvements to the through-block arcade. The development site shown here with the blackout line has a total area of approximately twenty-eight thousand three hundred square feet and comprises six tax lots numbered sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen in Block One Thousand Nine. The project lot site outlined here in blue dashed line comprises of Lot Nineteen, is commonly known as Parker Hotel, but has recently changed its name to Thompson Central Park Hotel. The remainder of the zoning lot comprises Lots Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen, each improved with a five-story residential building with ground-floor commercial use. The proposed design changes in this application are limited to the through-block arcade shown here in red within the forty-story hotel building. The project site has a total lot area of approximately twenty-two thousand square feet and is a regularly shaped with two hundred squ- two hundred feet of frontage on West Fifty-Sixth Street and twenty feet of frontage on West Fifty- Seventh Street. The site is currently improved with a forty-story plus penthouse mixed-use building. The primary use of the building is transient hotel up to the thirty-second floor, apartment hotels on floors thirty-three to forty, as well as retail at ground and below-ground levels and a below-grate parking garage. The site supports a six thousand eight hundred twenty square feet through-block arcade outlined here in red, providing public pedestrian access through the ground floor of the building between Fifty-Sixth and Fifty- Seventh Streets. The narrow portion of the through-block arcade within the West Fifty- Seventh Street side of the building currently contains an unauthorized bar known as the nave bar, which has been in place for an extended period. The site also supports an Azervert Plaza highlighted here in purple, fronting Fifty-Sixth Street. The plaza has a total area of approximately two thousand seven hundred square feet and is located along the entire two-hundred-foot frontage of the lot on West Fifty-Sixth Street. Plaza is essentially unimproved, except for one planter on the driveway to the below-grain parking garage. Separate from this application, the applicant is also pursuing chair certifications for the design changes to the plaza and open-air cafe. Before we go into the details of the proposed modifications, I want to give some background context on the previous approvals and informa- and enforcement to set up the context of this project. On May twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-nine, the City Planning Commission approved a special permit to construct a forty-story-plus penthouse mixed-use building on a zoning lot that merged Lots Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen in Block One Zero Zero Nine. Pursuant to Z R Section Seventy-four, Seven Twenty-one, the applicant was granted a heightened setback waiver, a rear-yard waiver, and a minimum distance between buildings waiver. Pursuant to Z R Section Seventy-four, Eighty-two, a floor area bonus for pro- providing a through-block arcade was also granted. However, the bonus was eventually not utilized by the building. The development was built on Lot Nineteen with floor area from the zoning lot merger at approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred square feet of bonus floor area generated by the Azervert Plaza. On March twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-eight, a non-U L E R P modification to the special permit was approved for the first floor of the hotel and signage outside of the building. The modification included a requirement to provide fifty-four movable chairs and eighteen movable tables within the arcade, the installation of a redesigned public space signage system, and the seasonal installation of a transparent glazed partition door for the through-block arcade. On September sixteen, nineteen eighty-eight, a second non-U L E R P modification to this special permit is approved to permit the lay-by by the, at the Six, Fifty-Sixth Street entrance to be reduced in size and for a change in the street striping. This lo- site also has a history of non-compliances for the through-block arcade, including failure to provide the required planting, seating, and signage. Most recently, on July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, the department building issued a summons for violations of the zoning resolution and special permit because the northern section of the through-block arcade was improperly occupied by nave, a private bar not authorized by the approved plans, which diminished the public's right of way through the arcade. The hotel failed to contest the summons and the violation was thereby sustained. And a penalty for ten thousand dollars was doctored against M P G P Associate L L P. In two thousand eighteen, due to continued non-compliance, the Department of City Planning referred this matter to the Law Department to ensure immediate compliance with all applicable requirements for the through-block arcade. And a letter detailing the non-compliance was sent to the applicant. D C P has since been working with the applicant to address these issues and modify the special permit as necessary to accommodate appropriate changes to the through-block arcade. I will also note here that the hotel's changed ownership since the previous violations were issued and the new owner has been working with the department to address these issues. The original special permit approval in nineteen seventy-nine included a through-block arcade pursuant to Z R Section Seventy-four, Eighty-two, which remained on the site even though the bonus generated by the arcade was never utilized by the building. The criteria to qualify for a through-block arcade bonus was that the resulting space provides substantial improvements of pedestrian circulation and appropriate secondary commercial frontage along the through-block arcade, such as small shops and restaurants. The special permit recited the design of this, of the through-block arcade in detail. And the accompanying approved plans included, among other things, movable chairs, benches, planting, seating, and a fountain within the arcade. The subsequent modifications in nineteen eighty-eight removed the fountain, increased the seating and tables, and introduced a transparent glazed door partition. When the department began working with the applicant to make design changes to the through-block arcade, we used the criteria of the original approval to ensure the proposed changes would improve pedestrian circulation and further activate the space in a way a secondary commercial frontage would. Since the through-block arcade is part of the approved plan, of, of approved drawings and was considered by the commission in their grant of bulk modifications as part of the original special permit, any modifications to the drawings require commission approval, which is why I'm presenting this application to you today. The applicant is proposing design changes to the through-block arcade within the building, uh, within the hotel buildings that links Fifty-Sixth Street and Fifty- Seventh Street to be facilitated by the proposed non-U L E R P modification. The department has gone through an extensive and iterative design process with the applicant and believes the proposed design changes will result in an improved through-block arcade that will provide a high-quality public amenity. Proposed changes include legalization of the nave bar, additional seating and tables for public use, and additional signage, among other things. I will go through these design changes by first focusing on the narrow portion of the, of the arcade fronting Fifty- Seventh Street and then on the central arcade space. Throughout this presentation, you will see images of the through-block arcade reflecting the design changes proposed in this application. The space was renovated when the hotel was temporarily closed during the pandemic as it was undergoing other renovations at the time. Instead of keeping the previous non-compliant conditions, the owners elected to make these updates to the public space with the understanding that they would have to comply with the plans as approved by the commission. The design changes to the narrow portion of the through-block arcade includes the legalization of the nave bar, additional seating and tables, and removal of decorative columns to create more open space for improved pedestrian circulation. The applicant is proposing to legalize the existing unauthorized bar to continue activation of the space. This slide shows the previous through-block arcade with an image of the unauthorized bar on the left and the proposed design with the rendering of the proposed bar on the right. To prevent privatization of a public space, all block-related activities are limited to the area highlighted in purple. No service is required for the public to use this space and the provided seating and tables. To that effect, a no-service-required sign is proposed to be installed on the wall across from the bar. The design changes also include expansion of the seating and tables in the space and provides high-quality furnishings as an improved public amenity. These images show the previous condition on the left and the improved condition on the right. An important design intervention in this narrow part of the arcade is the proposed removal of the decorative columns. This will improve pedestrian circulation and open up the space to make through-block connection more visible to the public. As you can see in these images comparing the previous condition on the left and the renovated space on the right, the connection to West Fifty- Seventh Street is clearly visible in the image on the right. As a result of this design change, the width of the clear pedestrian path would increase from six-point-five feet to over eight-point-five feet for a majority of the length of the Fifty- Seventh Street arcade space. These site plans comparing the previously approved and proposed central arcade space showcases the two major design changes to the space. First is the removal of the partition door to the narrow part of the arcade and the second is a significant increase in the seating and table. The applicant is proposing to remove the partition door between the central arcade space and the narrow arcade space to the north. The location of the door is highlighted with a blackout line. As you can see in these images comparing the previous condition on the left and the proposed condition on the right looking north towards West Fifty- Seventh Street, the removal of the partition door will create a more open space through-block arcade connection and improve visual access to enable the public to more seamlessly enjoy both spaces and use the through-block connection. The proposed design changes include additional publicly accessible seating and tables for a total of eighty-seven seats and thirty-four tables within the central arcade space, where previously only sixteen benches were provided. This slide shows another view of the increased seating in the central arcade space and the visual connection through the entrance by elevator banks. The proposal also includes an updated signage plan to improve, inform the public that this is a privately-owned public space open seven a.m. to midnight and no service is required. The signage plan for Fifty- Seventh Street includes two d- door decals and a marquee sign. An interior no sign, no-service-required sign is proposed in the narrow part of the arcade space. The signage plan for the part of the arcade facing Fifty-Sixth Street includes two d- door decals indicating this is a public space open seven a.m. to midnight and no service is required. In summary, the applicant is seeking a non-U L E R P modification to facilitate design changes to the through-block arcade. The proposed design changes include the legalization of the nave bar, additional seating and tables, removal of decorative columns, and gate separating the two portions of the arcade, and upgrades in the signage plan to create a high-quality public space and improve pedestrian circulation through the block. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, let me just, uh, kick off with a couple of questions and an observation. Um, the observation here is this is obviously a difficult site. Um, and one which will continue to be difficult, I would suspect, in an effort to try to balance, uh, the ability to make it desirable and compelling from the perspective of the private interests at play and the need to make it look and feel accessible to the public. Um, the fact that it had repeated notice of violation that were not tended to is a concern, um, particularly the ones which were the most easy to remedy. Uh, but to your point, this is a new owner and we have a new day here. So let me ask you a couple of questions about, um, the legalization of the nave bar. So how is it, uh, what is the action that allows for it to be legal? Or what made it unauthorized in the first place?
So, um, the approval was, uh, offered by the, the plans that were approved, the approved drawings. And the approved drawings originally did not include a bar in that space. So the applicant could not have a bar in the arcade space. And the way to legalize that would be through the consideration of the commission for, to now, to include that within the approved drawings.
Okay, so simply put, in the initial, um, uh, uh, through-block arcade, there was no provision for a bar. A bar was included. They were penalized for it through D O B. And this is an effort to legalize it by allowing for it to, uh, be part of the design change. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that the, the changes that they're proposing on the decorative columns and the removing of gates and, and those columns, I think are, to me, those are certainly, uh, big improvements here, will help. Um, I am a little concerned about how this site will continue to feel public, however. There's signage on the doors on both sides, as I understand it. Um, but I think that they need to do more here, uh, beyond just, you don't need to have, uh, a drink to sit at the table signs or whatever the precise language was. Um, perhaps it's signage which would note that you can pass through all the way from Fifty-Sixth to Fifty- Seventh Street or an additional, you know, standing sign in the middle, which just notes that this is a, a throughway if you, uh, if you wish to proceed. Um, because otherwise, it is, I think, missing a piece that would ensure that somebody who was coming in off the street and wanting to go from Fifty-Sixth to Fifty- Seventh knew that they actually were welcome and able to go right through there. Is that, um, I, I'd be curious to get, you know, eh, any thought from you as to whether that's something that the applicant here considered or whether there were any discussions about that previously.
Um, thank you for that comment. It's definitely something that we have been talking to the applicant about. Uh, our first concern when we started, you know, working with the applicant to come up with a design, a solution here that was, uh, that we could support. We did worry about the privatization and wanted to limit it as much as possible, which is why the nave bar limited, you know, uh, the, the bar activities to a very small space. But, uh, to your point of informing the public. To your point of informing the public, the signage that is proposed in the application is what we ultimately agreed on with the applicant. However, if the commission believes that we can improve that signage and inform the public, we can consider adding additional signage and come back to the commission for some ideas from our urban designers and the staff at the Manhattan office for additional signage here.
Okay, yes, I think, I mean, I certainly will hear from the rest of the commissioners, but I certainly think that that would be a worthy exercise here. And again, not that I don't acknowledge the complexity of trying to balance like the beauty of the space that you want to actually create with the need to make sure that everybody in New York City feels completely comfortable walking through there, but I think that they can do more. Let me ask one last question and then I'm going to go to a number of commissioners who raised their hand. Absent an approval here, so this is an approval for a, you know, a, this is a modification for a previously approved special permit. If we were to not approve it, the current design stands, is that correct?
Yes, so if we were not to approve the design, then it would be what was previously approved, so the number of seating is much lower and the tables are much lower and there is no bar in the space. So that would be what the approved condition would be, previously approved condition.
Okay, got it, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Commissioner Marine, Commissioner Crowell, Commissioner Benjamin, and Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you, Chair Grodink. So I too was going to comment on the look. I mean, there's a saying, looks like a duck who acts like a duck must be a duck, right? This actually looks like a dining area and it does not look like a pass-through. And I gotta tell you something, I've been to some of these areas that have these, some of these public passages that have these kind of setups and I feel really uncomfortable because I feel like I'm walking through people as they're eating their dinner and it just feels really uncomfortable. And I do applaud the applicant for the upgrades that are being proposed here, but I would question, how comfortable is this? And I would agree that we don't have to have drinks on a sign when we know that this is a public passage. I mean, I just don't think that's appropriate and we should look to the historic signs of all these public open spaces that we have, and I do not believe that any of them have anything other than this is a public open space and the seats were there on purpose to depict seats that say welcome, come sit down. So I too would be encouraging the applicant to try and consider those thoughts that have been posited for this application.
Thank you, appreciate this comment.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Crowell.
Thank you, I appreciate your presentation. I just have a question, do we have examples of other arcades like this in the city that might be looked to for inspiration, different inspiration?
We have a number of arcades, even the ones I showed you in the six blocks that are around the space, but they all are different in terms of what their design looks like depending on when they're approved, how they're approved, and things like that. So we can look to others for inspiration, but this is unique in what it's presenting and what it's proposing, and the Manhattan office really works with the applicant.
We're confirmed we're back on YouTube with the sound. Thanks, everybody, for your patience.
Okay, when we last left off, Commissioner Benjamin had asked the question as to whether we need this arcade and Osgood responded. Commissioner, back to you.
I know on this type of special permit, there is no time limit, is there?
No.
Because it was originally associated with a bulk bonus, even though they didn't use it. What would it take, would it take a BSA action to eliminate from the plan this arcade?
I'm not sure about how we would eliminate the arcade, but to speak to your comment about whether we need an arcade here or not, I think the department wouldn't necessarily take away public space from the city, so it is provided public amenity. And it wasn't just, like, I'll repeat it because in case the sound was cut off, but you know, this arcade was approved not just for the bonus generated, but also it was considered as a public amenity for the bulk considerations for the space of the height and setback considerations that were granted to the hotel building, the forty-story-plus penthouse building here. So it was considered within those considerations of the original special permit, so I'm not sure about taking that away and what mechanism would take that away because it's tied to not just the bulk, I mean, not just the bonus, but also the bulk. And in terms of whether we need it in this Through Block chain, I think that's another consideration we had thought about, like, providing a different sort of experience in this space in terms of the design and the proposed amenities. If you look at this map and follow the purple line of the Through Block connections, you can see there's more or less a straight Through Block connection between Fifty-first and Fifty-seventh Street that is more for people passing through, whereas this is to the side and this can provide a different sort of environment for the public to use and enjoy in more upscale public amenity in terms of the seating and things provided here.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask Susan, though, if we wanted to take away this special permit, is there any mechanism other than BSA that would allow us to do that? Sorry to spring that on you.
That's a good question, and I'd have to actually, I have to look into it a little closer. Honestly, nothing's jumping to mind, and I think we'd have to go back to look at the original report and the basis, what it was part of in issuing, and we might or might not have the ability to separate it out from that.
Okay.
So we need to take a closer look.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me go next to Commissioner Dweck, followed by Commissioner Cirullo, followed by Commissioner Bozark.
Thank you. Just following up on Commissioner Benjamin's comments, I do agree with Commissioner Benjamin that perhaps this is an opportunity to have it taken off the POPs, especially in light of the fact that they haven't used the bonus. But I think that the problem that we're all having is that it's too good to be true. It's such a beautiful space and it's a POP and the question is whether or not it's inviting. And I think that that could be solved through signage. I don't think we need to denigrate the space into something less than what it could be, and it's an opportunity to really step up the game on POPs in general, and let's see how this one plays out. It is a beautiful space and it would be a shame to start breaking it back down to a more base use.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Cirullo.
Okay, so my thoughts on this, I just want to start by saying, there's nothing that I'm about to say that should be inferred as condoning private commercial use of what was otherwise approved to be public space. With that said, I believe of all the neighborhoods in our city, Midtown Manhattan is starving for public space, in or out, and that we should be doing what we can to encourage both good design and a safe and enjoyable environment for people to use when they're not in their offices hopefully, or they're walking down the street. With that said, I also think we should be looking at the design that we're seeing, absent something I don't know, as really a creative, inviting, I know we all have a different opinion on what's inviting. Not every public space should or needs to look exactly like every other public space, and this is definitely unique. The issue I don't know the answer to, which I know is really, comes down to enforcement of what should and shouldn't be done, not design, although design sometimes helps things occur. But in this case, if this may be a completely unique kind of public space for people to enjoy in Midtown, the question we would have in terms of whether or not it will be used for a different purpose is whether or not there's service at these tables and chairs. That's not clear to me in this application. I'm assuming publicly the answer will be no, but again, that's an enforcement issue. If someone's going to sit and get a menu and be served from the adjoining potentially legalized bar, that's not a public use. But if someone can walk in with a coffee and sit with their laptop and use a really comfortable chair with a nice environment, we should be creating that for people or at least providing that option. So I don't want to, for me, I don't want to be concerned, I don't want to link the potential enforcement issues with what could be a really interesting new design for the public to experience in this particular case, nor do I think we should be taking the space away, but that's, we all could have different opinions on that. And so I don't know the answer to how will this space operate and its relationship with the adjoining adjacent commercial enterprise, but I think that may be something we would want to know more about so that we could formulate an opinion about, is this an extension of the commercial space, which of course would be against everything that we should be supporting in this particular matter? Or is it something that really we can act upon but then ensure our sister agencies that would be involved in enforcing to ensure that the space is used properly and legally occurs? So that's just my take on that. So I thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Bozark.
I mean, a lot of what I wanted to say was actually just covered by Commissioner Cirullo. I also, it's an opportunity, it seems like a question, it's really just a design question of how do we make it as inviting to the public as possible? And it feels like there should be, and I'd be curious, especially before considering whether there's an avenue for taking it away, what the community board, I mean, they'd probably perceive that as, if they even already know about it as a public space, which I'm sure they do, would probably want to opine on it being taken away. But also, I mean, not to add more process, but these could be great opportunities for public charrettes, if it's a public space, what makes it most inviting, that can be very subjective, but anyways, I would, I agree that we should just focus on how to make it as inviting as possible, taking different precedents, et cetera.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Marine.
I just want to jump back into the conversation for a second because, one, I happen to agree with you, Commissioner Cirullo, that we should be providing comfortable spaces for folks in these passages, and I do agree with that. I just think it looks so organized, that it looks so stoic, that it looks like a restaurant. It doesn't look like I can move this chair and I can rearrange the furniture and I can come in with my computer, so you're absolutely right. I may want to do that, I just don't feel that I feel comfortable or I am welcome in that space. And then to Commissioner Bozark's point, and to a point that you also brought out, is the city should have been monitoring and compliance on these spaces, and the city has had a horrible track record throughout the years, monitoring compliance on anything, including affordable housing deals, which is why it's been thrown to nonprofit developers to monitor. So I think that something needs to be created here for these public spaces, that they're monitored and they're visited and we make sure, the city, that they're being used as purposely intended and approved by this body.
Thank you. Okay, well, let me suggest that we share those comments back with the applicant here. I will just associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Cirullo about the need to have spaces like this in Midtown because of how densely populated the area is and how many people there are looking for just an inch of public space to be able to sit and have a moment to enjoy it. So I'd be looking to double or triple the size of the space rather than potentially relinquish, relinquishing it. But I do think that we have to strike a balance here because it does have a look and feel of a private space and it has to retain that character where somebody coming off the street at least understands that it's their choice, subject to enforcement, subject to server demeanor, and all the other things that we cannot police on a daily basis which make this really complicated when striking the balance. But I think that they need to do more here. So, okay, all right. With that, we're going to refer this to the community board for sixty days. Thank you very much, as always. And we are going to go to our next item, Ryan?
Certainly, and I also just wanted to ask, perhaps we can organize some site visits to the Parker Hotel with the Manhattan office to walk you through and you actually get to feel how it feels. We'll reach out.
I would note that the bar is not yet official, so let's hold until, you know, such time. All right.
Okay, the fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of special permits in Manhattan Community District Four, and our presenter is Connor Clark.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Two Fifteen West Twenty-Eighth Street Property Owner LLC and Two Twenty-Five West Twenty-Eighth Street Property Owner LLC, which seeks two parking special permits pursuant to Section thirteen four five one of the zoning resolution to build two separate residential accessory automated parking garages with a total capacity of seventy-seven spaces as part of two adjacent mixed-use developments in Community District Five on West Twenty-Eighth Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenues. The application was certified on September nineteenth and is back to the commission after being reviewed by Community Board Five and the Manhattan Borough President. The two buildings have been labeled by the applicant as A, the easternmost building, and B, the westernmost. Both developments were completed last year. Development A, located at Two Thirteen to Two Nineteen West Twenty-Eighth Street, contains eighty-seven condominium units and just over seven thousand square feet of retail space along with the proposed forty-one automated parking spaces. As of right, it has permitted nineteen accessory parking spaces. Development B, located at Two Twenty-One to Two Twenty-Seven West Twenty-Eighth Street, contains one hundred twelve rental units and just over six thousand square feet of retail space along with the proposed thirty-six automated parking spaces. As of right, it has permitted twenty-four accessory parking spaces. Development B will also contain thirty-five affordable dwelling units. Previously, the development site had three curb cuts and each building now has one curb cut for their as-of-right parking spaces. The zoning lot is outlined here in neon green on this map. The development site is located in Chelsea. The Penn South Middle Income Housing Development is located across Eighth Avenue to the west and the Fashion Institute of Technology in blue is directly south. High-density commercial uses such as One and Two Penn Plaza and Madison Square Garden are located three blocks to the north. The One train runs along Seventh Avenue and stops at Twenty-Eighth Street on the same block as the zoning lot. The AC and E trains run along Eighth Avenue and stop at Penn Station along with the Long Island Railroad, New Jersey Transit, and M-Track. The project site is in an M-one-sixty zoning district, the first established in the city in two thousand and eleven, which is intended to preserve the neighborhood's commercial and manufacturing character while allowing residential development and encouraging the creation of affordable housing. These photos show both buildings having been recently constructed. The photo on the left shows Building B, the westernmost building, and the photo on the right shows Building A, the easternmost building. This elevation shows the lower portion of the facade of both buildings. The garage entrances are outlined in red at the western and eastern edges of the buildings. In-between the residential and retail entrances to the buildings are shown. Now I will walk through the plans for each of the garages. This slide shows the plans for the ground floor levels of both garages. Building A is on the right or east and Building B is on the left or west. To access the garages, drivers will proceed east on one-way West Twenty-Eighth Street, a narrow sixty-foot-wide street, and turn left into either garage via a twenty-foot-wide curb cut. This slide shows close-ups of both garage entrances. The approaching driver will open the exterior garage door via a remote control device. Once incoming vehicles enter the garage, if there is no exiting vehicle being processed in the entry-exit room, a second automated door will open leading to the entry-exit room. Once the vehicle has been properly positioned on the lift and the motorist has left the entry-exit room, they will use the storage kiosk located in the forecourt to request that the vehicle be parked. If the system scan of the entry-exit room shows it is clear, the automated door will close and the system will process the vehicle. Motorists seeking to retrieve vehicles will enter the forecourt via the building lobby where they will order their car by using the kiosk. The parking system's vehicle lift will transport the vehicle up from below-grade vehicle storage area. Once the vehicle is delivered to the ground floor, the entry-exit room door and garage door will open and the motorist and passengers will access the vehicle. Upon leaving the garage, the exiting vehicle will turn left from the building onto West Twenty-Eighth Street and travel eastbound. For storage of incoming vehicles, once the automated door is safely closed, the vehicle lift will transport the vehicle down several levels. These drawings show the cellar level where the vehicle will be rotated into position. The vehicle lift will then pass through the subcellar one level. The vehicle, uh, lift will then pass through the subcellar one level. When it reaches the subcellar two level, the system will park the vehicle using the pallets and conveyors on this level or on subcellar three level just below it. Acceptance of an incoming vehicle would take approximately three minutes. Additional parking would be located on the subcellar three level. The findings for section thirteen four five one indicate that the CPC may approve a parking facility that exceeds the twenty percent maximum limit for Community District Five if the number of off-street parking spaces in such proposed parking facility is reasonable and not excessive in relation to recent trends in close proximity to the proposed facility with regard to dwelling units and parking spaces. The special permit also has findings in section thirteen four five related to congestion, the efficient functioning of streets, conflicts between different modes of transportation, and the character of the streetscape. While there may be broad, broader concerns regarding philosophical issues related to parking, the commission must make the specific findings laid out in section thirteen four five and thirteen four five one. For, uh, for the finding related to residential growth, in order to show that the increase in parking is reasonable and not excessive, the applicant completed a residential growth parking study for both developments. The study compared all changes in residential off-street parking depicted on the map on the right to all changes in residential dwelling units depicted in the map on the right, on the, excuse me. The one on the left is, uh, parking and the one on the right is residential growth, uh, residential dwelling units. Um, all these within a ten-year look-back period from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-two. Sites were considered if they were located within a radius of a third of a mile from the development site. The study found that during the ten-year look-back period, there was a net decrease of fifty-five parking spaces, including the project, and an increase of one thousand eight hundred forty-three dwelling units. This gives the proposed project a residential growth parking ratio of negative three percent. In Community District Five, the maximum permitted growth of off-street parking spaces to dwelling units in a ten-year look-back period is twenty percent. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to section thirteen four five one to allow for a total of seventy-seven parking spaces and two garages on a zoning lot containing two residential buildings with a total of one hundred ninety-nine residential units. This would be an increase of thirty-four spaces over the forty-three as-of-right spaces allowed in this area of the Manhattan Core. Community Board Five reviewed the application and recommended denial by a vote of thirty-one in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining. CP Five's recommend, uh, comments included the following. First, they said, quote, "The applicant intends to make all accessory off-street parking spaces in the garage available for residents of the buildings through a ninety-nine-year lease at an offering price of five hundred thousand dollars, but if any parking space is not requested by a resident of the building, such space shall be made available to the public." Second, they noted that the, the buildings are located in a transit-rich area with access to several subways and buses as well as Penn Station. Third, they indicated that the census data indicates that eighty-three percent of residents in the area do not have access to a car. The applicant is, uh, has stated that they plan to sell the parking spaces to the residents and rent any spaces to the residents that they cannot sell. Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine reviewed the application and also recommended denial. He cited similar concerns regarding the transit-rich neighborhood and low levels of car ownership. He also argued that parking provision may, may, uh, encourage greater use of cars and that this negatively affects the environment. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so, let's talk about this parking study for a minute and the, the magic of this number of twenty percent here. So as I understand it, you look back, uh, over ten years and you look at a one-third radius around the site. And if the ratio between parking and the residential unit is over twenty percent, then it's not reasonable by definition.
The growth of both.
Explain that? Go ahead.
So in other words, we look at the change in parking and change in residential use, in residential dwelling units. And if that change, uh, parking compared to residential dwelling units is greater than twenty percent, uh, then we say it's unreasonable and excessive per the language in thirteen four five one.
Okay. Uh, and we looked back and saw that not only was it not over twenty percent, it was, it came out to a minus three percent.
Correct. Well, the applicant, the applicant looked back in their study and we verified it.
We verified what they, what they came up with, which is that's minus three percent. So the, the standard of twenty percent to look at that as the, as the pace as to what is reasonable, where does that, where does that come from? Where's, where does that, you know, how did that come to be?
Well, to my mind, uh, I'm guessing it, it's, it matches the, um, twenty percent set in each of the community districts, so one through six is twenty percent as far as the maximum, uh, and then seven and eight are thirty-five percent, and so the growth ratio matches that. But, um, if Steve wants to jump in, he, uh, he's done it.
Hi, just, just to add to what Connor's saying, is that was codified back in nineteen eighty-two when the original Manhattan Core, uh, parking text, uh, created, uh, parking maxims to help alleviate traffic and improve the air quality. So that's where it originally comes from and we, District Seven and Eight have a higher residential population, so those, that's why those are set at thirty-five percent and the one through six was set at twenty percent for dwelling units.
Okay. These buildings are, they're, they're up.
Yeah.
They're already up. So, and they have an as-of-right forty-three spaces here.
Correct.
Is it forty-three or forty-four?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay. It's okay. Forty-three, and so they're asking for seventy-seven. So, um, the space that would be used for potential cars here if we were to grant this, if it is not granted, it just becomes what for them in the building?
It's going to be their as-of-right, uh, parking.
It would just stop at forty-three and ever the rest would be?
Storage space.
Storage, okay. Um, okay. And the standard for us for thirteen four five one is, it needs to be reasonable and excessive as defined by that historical term and evaluation, twenty percent.
Yes.
Here, negative three. Um, plus efficient functioning of street, won't contribute to serious traffic congestion, won't unduly interrupt flow of pedestrian traffic. Those are the findings necessary here, is that right?
Yes. So that's thirteen four five.
Thirteen four five, okay. Oops. There it is, thirteen four five, okay. Okay. All right, let's see what are the questions. Commissioner Marine?
Um, when this first, when this, when this application first came to us, my first question was, why is it that we're doing this knowing that we are looking to, um, institute congestion pricing in the city? Manhattan specifically is a very transit-rich corridor or, or, or borough, and we know that these rules were created in nineteen eighty-two and this text may have been altered in nineteen eighty-two, but we're in two thousand twenty-two where things have changed and we have all agreed that we're trying to get cars off the street and we're trying to get more folks into transit. And by this application, we're not doing that. So we are, on one hand, at the city, agreeing to congestion pricing and getting cars off the street, and then you also want us to vote on a positive note on an application that puts more cars onto the street. I do understand that the, the, the formulas were created, um, and based to, to support the then issues that we were facing with the number of cars on the street. I think it needs to be revised and needs to be, uh, 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 updated and, and considerations placed for the fact that we're looking to do congestion pricing in the city of New York.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Also to build on Commissioner Marine's question or comment, um, when we first discussed this, you, you referenced that twenty-eleven study. Um, how is that, I mean, it, it also, I mean, it, it, it puts further, I think, um, eh, detail in terms of how outdated are parameters maybe?
What, I'm sorry, what twenty-eleven study?
You, you, you referenced that twenty-eleven, uh, parking, uh, study.
Are you referring to the text amendment in twenty thirteen? Oh, no, the twenty, okay, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, and in your response, you, you, you based, uh, the explanation based on a twenty-eleven study, but, which, which I, I just wanted to make sure that you could maybe speak a little bit about, you know, what is in the study that we could still use? Why do you think that that's still relevant besides sort of the actual language?
So we can, uh, definitely get you a copy of that study, but what that study did was it looked at how people are using cars and vehicles at that time, which, you know, ten years ago or so. And it found that a number of people were using cars to bring in equipment, uh, using it for work, using it for a variety of reasons, uh, that weren't all just, I want to go shopping in Midtown type of reasons. Um, and, uh, that's the, how we then made the twenty-thirteen text amendment, and that was one element of it. So, uh, the other element is when we created these findings related to the residential growth parking study, we were, uh, tasked by the commission to, on previous parking special permits, said, "We don't know whether we should grant this special permit because we don't have any data, we don't have any facts on parking in the area." So that's why we created this methodology, looking in the area where you could walk, where you would park your car and walk home and look at that twenty percent or thirty-five percent. So that's the basis of the residential of parking study. So that's, that's one element. But we can get you a copy of that, uh, report that then turned into the text amendment.
No, thank you, thank you for that. And my understanding is there are no intentions of updating that study, right, right now at the moment?
Uh, we're not updating any study, but we are, uh, the city and, and the department is looking at different, uh, housing issues and analyzing different ways to encourage housing development, and that includes an element of looking at parking requirements.
Thank you, I think, I appreciate that. It's just that, it's, um, something that I had noted back then that I, I also feel it relates to what, uh, Commissioner Marine was saying, in addition to the fact that we may not all, also, we may also be ignoring sort of like the amount of bicycle infrastructure that has been built since then and other alternative mobility systems that are in place right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let me go to Commissioner Rampershead, uh, on Zoom, and then, uh, Commissioner Goodrich.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, first I want to say I do agree with the comments by Commissioner Marine. Um, I do share the same concerns and also, you know, I mentioned this upon certification, my other concern was about the queuing loading, you know, there's only one spot and I know they said it was, I guess, enough, uh, before the actual elevator, before you go inside the elevator, but I'm also curious about the automated system that they're going to be utilizing for this proposed, uh, system. Um, has it been used before in other buildings? And I know they said it takes about three minutes, but, you know, I'm thinking, and I see it all the time, you can go to the mall and there's always an issue with the machinery, something comes up. So I feel like it would be more than a three-minute process for these automated systems to really work to get the car back up to the, to the person waiting for it. So can they speak a little bit more to that in terms of the system that they're going to be utilizing and where else has it been used in the city of New York? Because I have seen it used in Philadelphia, DC, but it was a different kind of format from what I've seen in those buildings. Uh, because this is quite interesting that it's going down to three sub-levels where it's turning. I haven't seen that before, so I'm just curious, uh, to learn a little bit more about how this, how the, the system operates.
Sure, yeah, it's, it is being used, I think, in a couple locations in the city already. Um, I don't have the details on those locations, but I can talk to the applicant and, uh, they can also, um, raise it on Wednesday when they come in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
If you're a driver who lives in that area, works in that area, those residents are, are or are not covered in this?
No, I mean, the, the census tract, I mean, it depends on how you're looking at it, but if you're looking at it based on the ACS or the census, it would just be the residents of the census tract. I mean, there's another, you can...
In that area? Not in here.
No, I mean, like, you could, you could look at the, the CTPP data, you know, and look at the workers in that census tract, but it's really only residents and workers. And...
Or the close workers?
Well, no, that, that's another, that's another data set that, so the, the data that they're citing is, is the ACS data, which is just residents in the census tract.
If you live in the area, try, like, house living, if you work, if you're out of here all the time, also house living.
Well, part, part of, I'm not sure if this gets to what you're saying, but part of twenty-eleven study was we found that a lot of, um, garages or a lot of people who own cars in the, in the Manhattan Core are actually using them mostly on weekends and not for commuting purposes. Um, so the, the likelihood, uh, is that this garage will, would function similarly, that, um, the residents of these buildings would probably own the cars and, and not really use them for, for commuting. Okay. Sorry, what? It's not, it's the, it's accessory parking, so it's, it's for the, it's for the residents. There's the option within the Manhattan Core rules to...
I thought it says, the sale could be open to the public. Is it just sales open to residents?
No, the, so, so the, the way they're setting it up is for the, they're, they're going to sell the, the spaces to the residents, and then if they can't sell all them, they're going to rent them to the residents. And then there is this outside possibility that sometime in the future they could make some of them open to the public.
Okay, that's what I was looking at.
But there are logistical questions about how they would do that.
Yeah. Just to add to what Connor's saying too, one of the things we did in twenty thirteen is, and what the study showed was, as he was saying, is that people, uh, park in accessory parking facilities that don't live in the building. So what we did with twenty thirteen is we said accessory garages can be open to the public in the Manhattan Core. So if you're driving in from upstate or wherever you're suggesting you can drive to, if that, whoever's operating that garage has a DCA license and it's accessory, they can open that up to the public, because when you get a DCA license, you have to post rates, you have to post information on the number of parking spots, and then it becomes basically a public parking garage. And I think what we're seeing from, uh, the community board is that they prefer that these garages be open to the public so that their community can come in and park in those areas too.
Thank you. Commissioner Bozard?
Um, thanks. I would want to echo a lot of Commissioner Marine's, um, comments, but also just had a question. Um, I understand the study serves as the basis for understanding whether what's being proposed is unreasonable and excessive, but, um, is that just a guidepost or does this, I'm curious just about what, um, what it means if it's not unreasonable, unreasonable and not excessive according to these guidelines, and yet based on where we are today and, um, our policy priorities, don't believe it should be approved. What, how, how does that, are these just guidelines? Does it, are we bound by, um...
Well, um, if, uh, I mean, the, the language here is, as I highlighted it, it's, um, you know, kind of, there is a subjective element to this or, or a sort of a loose, it's not clearly defined as in the data, but we've been using this methodology of the third of a mile radius, the twenty percent ten-year look-back period, um, to define reasonable and not excessive. So, um, that has been sort of the agreed-upon framework that, you know, that the, um, engineering consultants have, have used that, all the applicants know it, it's fairly well-known. Um, does that answer your question or...
I think so, yeah. Enough.
Yeah, the, the, generally when we have special permits with, with findings, if, if the commission needs to, to sort of show in a way that they don't meet the findings, right? If, if they were to want to deny, uh, something, right, they would have to not meet the findings. And, and we typically, you know, look to prior applications in the standards because we don't want to be moving the goalposts or bars for applicants. That's not fair and probably illegal. Um, that said, that if there is some compelling reason to depart, then the commission can articulate that.
Right, that's very helpful, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, other questions, comments? I will note, uh, we will be seeing this one on Wednesday for a public hearing, so lots of occasion for us to go even deeper on this one, but if there are other questions now, certainly appropriate. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, uh, for that. Certainly an interesting and complicated, uh, uh, policy question. Um, we will send this off to our public hearing on Wednesday and, uh, and we'll pick it up then. Okay, Ryan, what's next?
Uh, the fifth item on our, uh, agenda is a post-referral review...
Uh, the fifth item on our, uh, agenda is a post-referral review. This is of a non-ULEP modification to previously approved authorization. Uh, there is also an authorization pursuant to the special South Richmond district, and our presenter is Barry Fisher.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This private applicant requests the commission authorization for modification of existing topography in the special South Richmond Development District. And, uh, non-ULEP minor modification to a previously approved commission authorization for waiver of bulk regulations within unimproved streets to facilitate the development of one single-family home on, in an R3X district, uh, within the Pleasant Plains section of Staten Island's, uh, Community District, uh, 3. And, uh, um, at the same special district that was talked about this morning. Uh, the, uh, site is in the center, uh, surrounded by detached homes, one and two family in an R3X district. It fronts the, uh, the service drive for the, um, veterans, uh, Korean War Veterans Memorial Parkway. Uh, and further to the north is Parkland. Uh, this proposal would add a home to this yellow, uh, triangle-shaped , uh, lot, um, for which, uh, the commission has prior approvals. So these 11 homes are now constructed, uh, and they were approved by the commission, um, for 11, uh, uh, homes totaling 20 dwelling units, uh, along with a private road. So the commission, uh, approved a certification for subdivision for, of this entire site from one zoning lot to 11 zoning lots. They approved modification of topography. These two actions are in the special South Richmond Development District talked about this morning. And then a citywide authorization was also approved for waiver of bulk regulations within unimproved streets. Now, the unimproved street is, uh, named Fonda Place. It's on the city map. It's, it's an official street, but it was never improved. It's made up, consists of backyards of other homes. Uh, and so the, uh, the applicants requested BSA approval for a portion of these two homes to be built within this, uh, what's sometimes called a paper street because it, it was never built out. Uh, and, uh, commission authorization for these rear yards to be waived essentially, um, uh, so that this street would not be treated as a street, and instead, uh, access would be provided by this, this Bradford Avenue, which is a road created for the rest of the subdivision. So, uh, the commission approved these actions in 2008. Uh, one of the zoning lots is this very irregular, uh, dark outline. Uh, one house was approved and built. The applicant says that they kept this, uh, separate and vacant, uh, due to a separate private dispute, which has now been resolved. So now the applicant proposes this, uh, house in yellow, uh, on this, this triangle-shaped lot in green. Uh, they request a new authorization for modification of topography to create level ground with Bradford Avenue, which is about five feet higher than, uh, adjacent properties. Uh, they also, uh, request a non-ULEP minor modification to that, uh, prior authorization because, um, this, uh, if, if I back up one again, this, this home, uh, got this bulk waiver here. Uh, they, they're requesting a, a non-ULEP minor modification just to document that this additional home on this same zoning lot would, uh, not change any of the bulk waivers that they already received. Uh, now, this was presented to the commission in 2016 and referred out to the community board, who recommended third, uh, disapproval on a vote of 37, uh, to zero. So the reasons were that they supported only the 11 homes that are, are now built, and, uh, there was opposition to adding any more homes. They also have a complaint from a neighbor regarding stormwater and privacy, uh, caused by the higher elevation, um, and, uh, especially this home here, uh, complained of, uh, stormwater from, uh, elsewhere, uh, within the block, uh, accumulating on their property. So as a, as a side note, uh, these are the elevations of the proposed single-family home. Uh, the delay was caused first by the applicants wanting to slow down a little bit to assess their options, uh, due to the negative, uh, response from the community board and others. And additionally, uh, city planning staff raised, uh, compliance concerns regarding the minimum lot width rules on this very, uh, irregular lot, uh, which have been now resolved. So at last, this, uh, project is ready to go to a commission vote. And I'll be happy to, uh, answer any questions.
Thank you. This is, uh, a little complicated, I think. So let me just see if I can straighten out a couple of points. You said the staff at, at the DCP raised issues about, um, bulk ru, bulk rules due to the narrowness of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
The lot has not changed, though. So how are those issues resolved?
Uh, we confirmed, um, between, uh, you know, agencies that, uh, the, that they meet the bulk rules for minimum lot widths, um, which in, uh, Staten Island, we have a little bit extra, uh, uh, rules for, for, for how narrow you can situate a house in a lot. That's, that's approaching that minimum width.
Okay.
Uh, so, so, so we confirm that, that they are met, and so it can proceed to a vote.
So the concerns, the concerns were just, there were concerns, but they were not founded, is what you're saying. They were, they were raised, but they were, it was compliant, it was able to proceed?
Right.
Okay. Um, and the, the notion that these are all part of the same zoning lot, all of these sites?
Uh, this, this house is on the same zoning lot as, uh, just this one other house, which was constructed. So the commission approved all these other homes to be on separate zoning lots, actually.
So every other home on this map is on their own zoning lot?
That's right.
Except for, in this corner over here, you have one home and the unbuilt area that are together?
Exactly.
Okay. And the, the specific actions that we're being asked to undertake here, we've got a modification of topography, and we also have a waiver of the bulk regulations. Is that right?
Uh, what we have, uh, before us now is, uh, the minor modification for waiver of bulk regulations with unimproved streets. And just, just to document that, uh, we're, we're adding an additional home to that zoning lot, but that the prior, uh, bulk waivers for, for those, for, for this rear yard in particular is not changing. So it has a new, uh, authorization for modification of topography around this home and this, uh, non-ULEP minor modification of the prior, uh, bulk waiver.
Okay. So the modification of the topography is for the new unbuilt home and for the, um, the waiver of the bulk regulations is a minor modification of the prior waiver, is that right?
That's right.
And it's a minor modification to enable the new home to be built or the old home to continue to, to be in compliance?
It's, it's to allow this, this new home to be added to the site plan, essentially. So it's not affecting this, this bulk waiver that's down here. It's just changing the site plan and saying that the bulk waiver hasn't changed.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Cerulo, go ahead.
Barry, Barry, help me. Let's, let's go back in time for a minute, okay?
Yes.
And I, I wish I could, uh, there's parts of this. This is along the Service Road, Drum Gul Road, right off the Service Road?
That's right.
Okay. And originally, at some point in the history of this project, there was a house originally proposed in the triangle area, originally. I'm, I'm making statements of fact, you, hoping they're true. You tell me if they're, that's true or it's not true.
Uh, the, there was, uh, a different site plan, um, that had actually a curb cut here, and, and the community, uh, did an opposition against a curb cut being there when you could simply drive around this way. So, so, so there, there was a different site plan, and, and there were, uh, a couple additional homes. So, so-
But was one of those, sorry to interrupt you, but was one of those homes somewhere stuck in the triangle-ish area?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. And if I recall, there was great discussion at that time about how inappropriate that particular lot would be for a home to be put on it. We talked about maybe making it public area, green area. I, I'm just, part of this is just helping me get back to 2008. Am I, am I correct in that? Was it, that we, this was definitely a conversation at the time, and what ended up happening was that house was removed from the application. And, and then the 11, I guess the 11 houses, which, one, two, three, four, five, six, the 11 houses that have been constructed were constructed.
Uh, there's, there, there was a, a change to, to the, to the proposed plan. So I don't, I don't have the specifics-
Okay.
-of that.
But the, but, but we, we're agreeing that at one time, there was a house in the triangle area under, under some site plan that did not ultimately get approved. But this site plan was approved. What we're seeing, the, the built-out area was ultimately approved.
That's right.
That's correct. So, and now, almost 15 years later, or whatever the period from approval, because this is around a very long time, I actually wondered if this would occur, we're seeing this development again, but under the, the presentation that it's to build one house, right? Because all the other houses are built.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. The, the only, uh, application before this is for one house.
And just for my own mental health, where is the house being proposed?
It's right there in the footprint.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Right in the middle of the triangle that we said 10 years ago, whatever many years ago, we didn't want to see happen?
Yeah, that, that seems to align, uh, with the community, uh, with the applicant, um-
Well, not just the community. It aligns with the commission's point of view on this also, no? Because I know that's what, Orlando, please weigh in, because maybe you, you-
Have a memory that I don't have here.
Yeah, I was just looking at Dan. So, no, I think, I think you're on the right track, and I think your memory serves correctly. The, the real question here was, that house has not changed its form. And this, architects, don't forget. The reason why this home was always in question was because of the shape, and we were told that the backside of the house was only about 10 feet wide, and it wasn't going to work. And so therefore, they decided to not include this home. We did ask, would it be open space for this community? And they said they would get back to us. Now they're coming back with the house. What I am saying here is that if, if, I don't, I still don't think, in comparison to the rest of the homes, this is a very tiny, single-family home. And I understand why the, why it is the way it is, because it's respecting the side yards that it's required to have and blah, 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 and all the zoning formulas that, that will allow this size of a home to sit here. But the home, it was tabled because the developer thought, my understanding was, that he could not sell this home the way it was shaped.
Well, I, I, I'm not saying that, that, that is not substantively correct. There were other discussions about the appropriateness from a planning perspective of sticking a house in this, on this corner, in, in this area. And so we were successful in not, in not having that occur at the time, but now there's this, we'll call it second bite of the apple, where the applicant is coming back to build a house in the same area where we, now maybe the design of the house might be different, and maybe we now see this as being more appropriate for the space. But we were all in agreement at another point in time that this was not an appropriate location for the house. It, am I remembering that incorrectly?
Uh, I, I, um, you know, like I said, what, what you're saying, uh, aligns with the community response. I would add that this is, uh, a, a non-ULEP project that does not have a public meeting, so.
So this is it for all intents and purposes. So I do think we should-
And we're relying on the 2016-
I do think-
-weigh-in of the community on this?
Well, I would, I would also add that, uh, the applicant would not have been present, uh, in this conversation back in 2006 or 2008 timeframe. So they claim that there was a private dispute, which is the reason why they pulled that house from, from this area, and, and they're adding it in because the private dispute is resolved.
I, I don't know anything about that, but-
Just say that we do have, I mean, while there is not a hearing on this, um, there is also not a ULEP clock on this. So we can, I think what we might do is listen to your thoughts and questions here today. We can go back and actually, there are probably some folks still around from, and, and staff who may remember this, that we could also, you know, query as to what was said and, and, uh, you know, anything like that, and then come back with, with some-
Yes, let's circle, let's circle back on this one because it seems like litigation or dispute was resolved is different from, commission considered and wanted to keep this open. Those are different, uh, those are different. So we, we need to, we need to sort that out. So let us, let us hold on this one, and we will revisit at a later date. Um, but good. Thank you very much, Barry. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Okay. Let's move on. Uh, Reform Temple?
Yep. The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District 4. Our presenter is Haikang Yang.
Thank you. So this is a pre-hearing for a private application by Orbor Management, Inc., and the Reform Temple of Forest Hills, for a zoning map amendment from an R12A zoning district to an R7D zoning district, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusion housing area in Forest Hills, Queens, Community District 6. This project was certified by the CPC on August 22nd. To summarize, the proposed action would facilitate the development of a new 10-story residential and community facility building, which includes space for the Reform Temple on the ground floor and 153 residential dwelling units, of which 38 to 46 would be permanently affordable on the floors above. So to recap, this map represents the existing land use and zoning in the surrounding area. The project area is located within a mix of R12A to the north, R32 pockets, and surrounded by an R6 and R71, R7AX districts, which contains multifamily apartment buildings ranging from 6 to 13 stories in height. The surrounding area has seen a number of rezonings over the past few years. The CPC recently approved two higher zone, um, higher-density rezonings within the 600-foot radius of development site. The former Parkway Hospital site rezoning shown in the orange just north of development site was approved by the CPC and Council in 2019. That rezoned the former site of the Parkway Hospital from an R12A zoning district to an R7A and R7X zoning district with MIH. In addition, the 1120671 Street Road rezoning was also approved by the CPC and Council in 2019 that rezoned the lot on the block immediately south of development site, from an R12A zoning district to an R32 zoning district, shown also in orange in the map directly south of development site. The project area is located in Queens, Community District 6, within the Forest Hills neighborhood. The project development site, highlighted in red, is located on the eastern edge of Forest Hills, within two blocks of the Grand Central Parkway and Flushing Meadows Corona Park. The area is generally characterized by residential buildings and some institutional uses. The residential buildings consist of a diverse mix of large apartment buildings with elevators and single-family detached homes. The area is well-served by mass transit. A transit zone is mapped directly across the street from the project area. Queens Boulevard Subway, EFM, and R Lines- Queens Boulevard, subway, E F M and R lines run along Queens Boulevard with the nearest station entrance two blocks west of the project area. Zooming in a little closer, the development site is owned and occupied by the Reform Temple of Forest Hills and is currently improved with a two-story building containing approximately two, twenty-two thousand eight hundred square feet. The image shows the current existing condition of the synagogue at the corner of one twelfth Street and seventy-first Road. Half of the space is used for classroom and office uses on the ground floor and the other half is used for house of worship on the mezzanine and second floor. The temple leases the classroom space to DOE as an as-need basis, such as when a local DOE building is undergoing renovations during Monday through Friday school hours. The current site also contains a four-space surface parking lot, which is accessed via the existing curbing cut, curve cut at a hundred and twelfth Street. This image shows the existing building on the right, looking north at a hundred and twelfth Street, with the context of the existing seven-story apartment building. The Reform Temple has served the neighborhood of the local Forest Hills community since nineteen sixty-three, when the existing building was built. In nineteen ninety-four, four congregational communities came together to form the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. Unfortunately, the existing building located at the site no longer meets the needs of the congregation. The applicants have noted that being able to provide their congregants with ADA accessible facilities is of utmost importance to the synagogue because of the inaccessibility of the existing building prevents certain populations of the congregation from attending service and community programming. Additionally, the applicants noted that the existing building is comprised of inflexible, inefficient eight-hundred-square-feet single-use space that is challenging to use as gathering The applicant proposes to construct a new building with community facility uses, affordable housing units, market rate units, and below-grade parking. The proposal will contain approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet of development, of which sixteen thousand six hundred square feet would comprise of the sanctuary and facilities, and a hundred thousand square feet would comprise of residential uses. The development, uh, the proposed development would enable the Reform Temple of Forest Hills to stay at their current location, which is of utmost importance to the congregants, and would enable them to update their facility to a space that is ADA compliant, flexible, efficient, and less costly to maintain. This rendering is the massing of the proposed ten-story development in context to its surrounding area, with a mix of three to thirteen-story apartments in its proximity. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment from an R one two A to R seven D. The R seven D proposed zoning district is contextual and developments in R seven D zoning districts typically result in high lot coverage apartment buildings that are set at or near the street line. The maximum residential FAR permitted is five point six, with the provisions of affordable housing pursuant to M I H. The applicant is also seeking a tech, zoning tax amendment to map M I H options one and two. The applicant proposes to have a hundred and fifty-three dwelling units and utilize either M I H option one or option two. If M I H option one is utilized, the proposed development would include approximately thirty-eight dwelling units affordable to households with income at or below the sixty percent of the AMI. And if M I H two is utilized, the proposed development would include approximately forty-six dwelling units, uh, for the house, uh, households with incomes at or below eighty percent of the AMI. For context, the AMI for Queens C D six is approximately eighty-one thousand dollars. And on the map, you can see number one has been designated for the former Parkway Hospital rezoning site, north of the development site, that was rezoned from the R one two A to R seven A, R seven X in two thousand and nineteen, as mentioned earlier in the presentation. Pursuant to Local Law seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-one, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity, because it would increase the primitive residential floor area by at least fifty thousand square feet. The applicant states that the proposal would produce new income-restricted housing units in a location that has high, medium income and is highly accessible to transit and jobs and create new ADA-compliant housing, which would bolster options for independent living in the community. The AMI of Forest C D six, as I mentioned earlier, is approximately eighty-one thousand, uh, dollars, which is higher than the AMI for the Borough of Queens and, uh, New York City overall. The applicant proposes to provide thirty-eight income-restricted units across a range of forty to eighty percent AMI, with estimated monthly rents ranging from nine hundred and thirty dollars for one-bedroom units to twenty-four hundred, uh, dollars for two-bedroom units at estimated average incomes ranging from thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars for a one-person household to one hundred and six, uh, thousand, one hundred and six thousand seven hundred dollars for a four-person household. Of the approximately a hundred and twenty thousand residents within C D six, thirty-one percent identify as Asian, three percent, thirty percent identify as black, sixteen percent identify as Latinx, and forty-four identify, percent identify as white. Between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, the area saw an increase in Asian, black, and Latinx populations, and a decrease in the white population. In conclusion, the applicant, uh, requests a zoning map amendment from an R one two A zoning district to an R seven D zoning district, as well as a zoning tax amendment to establish M I H area in Forest Hills, Queens, Community District Six. The proposed action would facilitate the development of a new ten-story, uh, building, which includes space for the Reform Temple of Forest Hills on the ground floor, and residential units with a mix of market rate and permanently affordable housing on the floors above and parking spaces below. So on October twelfth, um, twenty twenty-two, October twelfth, uh, Queens, Community Board Six held a hearing for this application and voted to approve the application with conditions including that the project provide greater consideration for site drainage by going beyond the D P minimum stormwater, um, site retention requirements, and incorporating, um, bio-swells and rain gardens along the sidewalk, provide a greater number of units above the M I H option one percentage at the average of sixty percent AMI, consider a reduction to the number of parking spaces fitted, lower the building base height to set back at the seventh story rather than the ninth story, consider a, uh, street wall setback from the property line along one hundred twelfth and seventy-first Road, uh, to provide some relief along the street. And Community Board Six would prefer that Lot Forty-One is not rezoned, but if it is, all conditions noted shall apply to the rezoned portion of Lot Forty-One. So following the CP vote, Queens, uh, Borough President had his hearing on October twenty-seventh. The Borough President recommended approval of the application with the following condition, that there should be a minimum thirty percent higher, um, thirty percent goal to hire MWBE firms and local residents, as well as working with the community-based organizations for outreach and job fairs when hiring contracting for this job. There should be quarterly reportings of these hiring initiatives to the Borough President and council member until the hiring goal has been reached. The applicant should continue looking into additional HPD subsidies to increase the proposed development's total affordable units to thirty-five percent of total units, and that these units include a mix of studios and one-two-two, uh, one-to-three bedroom apartments. And lastly, the applicant should follow through on all sustainable measures cited in the Borough President's public hearing. Continuing, continuing the U L A R P, uh, public hearing process, the applicant team will be here on Wednesday to address any further questions we may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will have a public hearing on this item on Wednesday. Let's see if there are any questions for now. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Just curious, what's been the general response to the comments from the, from the community board?
I'm sorry.
What, what's been the general response from the applicant to the comments from the community board?
Oh, it's been, um, engaging. They have responded, um, very well to the community board. They've had dialogue with the land use committee prior to even having certain, uh, during the pre-serve process, so it's been, um, well-received.
So you think we'll see some changes in the application reflecting the sustainability measures, et cetera?
I believe so, yeah. Um, the applicant and will have the architects, um, to discuss it, but there was definitely conversation about, um, uh, solar panels and such on their buildings.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Marine?
Sure, I just thought about something, and it's more of a statement than it is a question. So, you know, we rezoned in the Bronx, Edwella Grand Highway and Jerome Avenue for M I H, and what we're seeing is HPD putting in more subsidy to the tune of forty percent of the building to be affordable as a result of needing more affordable housing. As a matter of fact, some of those buildings are a hundred percent affordable, with the forty percent being, um, uh, set aside for, uh, a, a, a period of X number of years. The M I H portion stays affordable in perpetuity. I would posit that this HPD, HPD needs to also consider this application as well as putting in additional subsidies to try and increase those numbers, cause I too agree that the affordable housing numbers here need to be pumped up a little bit. We, we are suffering a crisis throughout the city and I think that it's, it's, it's in our best interest to try and advocate for more affordable housing on sites that the city does not have a control over, um, and applicants are coming to us and requiring subsidy. It, it, it's gonna benefit the entire community. City, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else before we pick this up on Wednesday? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Certainly. Uh, so moving on, the seventh item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for Livonia Four. Uh, the city council proposes to remove from the zoning tax amendment M I H option two and add the deep affordability option. Uh, staff believe that this modification is within scope.
Any questions on that? Why don't you do them both together and I'll call both together, Ryan?
Sure. So the eighth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for two eighty Bergen Street. Uh, this is the zoning map and zoning tax amendment. The city council proposes to remove from the zoning tax amendment M I H option two and add the deep affordability option, and staff believe this, uh, modification is also within scope.
Okay. So we're gonna do them both together. This is a scope determination and on items seven and eight, Livonia Four and two eighty Bergen, I'd like to seek, I sent by a voice vote to send a letter to the council that the modifications here are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, future votes. On November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City Planning Commission will consider, uh, nine thirty-four Tote Hill Road, one Nassau Place, fifty-nine sixty-one Amboy Road, twenty-two and twenty-six Scudder Avenue, Ionia Avenue, and one twenty-nine Jolene Avenue. All of these are actions pursuant to Staten Island Special Districts. Uh, staff believe that they meet the findings and are recommending approval. Seen any questions, nodding heads on those. Um, also for consideration on Wednesday, staff have prepared reports for fifty-eight oh-two Northern Boulevard rezoning. I believe we have Teal on Zoom, uh, here to, with the department recommendation on this. Teal?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Department of City Planning Staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate a new two-story building that would have eight thousand square feet of commercial floor area for an auto showroom. The department recognizes that the proposed development would transform a vacant building into a new commercial use, and that use aligns with the existing character of Nolan Boulevard. And the department supports, uh, future development facilitated by the R six B C two-two district that would have income-restricted housing near transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal. Any questions, comments? Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
All right. On ninety-seven, twenty-seven, fifty-seventh Avenue, uh, this is the commercial overlay. Uh, I believe Kathy Ko is on Zoom also to discuss the department recommendation.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioner. Uh, yeah, the Department of City's Planning Staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the expansion and modernization of an existing supermarket that has served the population of La Vex City and nearby communities since the nineteen sixties. The establishment of a C two four commercial overlay within the existing R six A and R six B zoning districts is appropriate due to its proximity to transit, and the new building would reinforce the existing mixed-use character of some, uh, fifty-seventh Avenue. And a CPC report reflecting this recommendation has been prepared for the commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. And, uh, then we also have, uh, the ACS HQ at one-ten Williams Street. Uh, Jasmine Tappale is on Zoom. Gus? Department's recommendation on this one? She is not, and I don't believe that I can pitch in on this one. Uh, so the department is recommending approval, uh, for the relocation of the ACS headquarters to one-ten Williams Street, which is in Lower Manhattan and has, you know, excellent transit access and is an appropriate, oh, Jasmine, do you wanna, do you wanna give your recommendation? Sorry, I started, I probably stole your thunder, but.
No, don't be sorry. I apologize for.
He was talking about great access to transit and the, so, uh, you know.
I was, I was improvising. Go ahead.
Um, well, as Ryan already started, um, the department fully supports, uh, the Administration for Children's Services, or ACS, acquiring office space at one-ten Williams Street to facilitate ACS's headquarters relocation. Um, the move will provide for better operational efficiency in one location, with improved and expanded space to accommodate new mandates and needs, um, and also support staff growth and provide better support for customer, uh, customer service to clients and also the general public. And so the department is pleased that ACS will receive the support they need in a more modern building. And if anyone has any further questions, happy to.
Go ahead.
Yeah, where is ACS located currently? They're at one-fifty Williams Street, so a block away from where they're going to be relocating. And all of the department is relocating to one-ten, or some are staying at one-fifty. Um, the entire one-fifty building is gonna be relocated to the one-ten, uh, building. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Jasmine.
Sure.
Great. Okay, Ryan?
Okay. Uh, moving on to our post-hearing follow-up items, uh, we have the Brechner Sites rezoning city map change. Um, the staff have had not prepared anything specific on this, but there, if there's any follow-up questions, we can get, we can get.
Commissioner Marine?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask a question about the ACS office space. Is that coming to us for the locating on Wednesday?
No, no, that's for a vote on Wednesday. Yeah.
The only reason why I'm asking is because I know that we, and I'm sorry she left, cause I, I just, I wasn't paying attention, I apologize. But I know that they're, one of the conversations that we had was, was, was lease or sale, and they gave us that understanding. They also talked about the rates of rent and how they're basing their rent. And I know it's too late to ask, but, you know, we, we should be, we should have been looking at, they're looking at rents based on what the city's paying and not really at what the market is offering today. And I think that that should have been looked at, because what's off, what the market is offering is much lower than what the city's paying in its other spaces.
Sure, we can convey, uh, those concerns to de-cas as well, cause I think that's broader than the I T S.
Yeah, you know, it is, it is, because you're gonna be, you know, the statement was that we're basing rents on, on what the city's currently paying, but we know we've had a market tank and that office space, there's a glut for space and, and it could be achieved at a lower rate. So if they can provide that, that would be great.
Sure.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, so on the Brechner Sites rezoning city map change, I don't think there are any further questions on that. And then on four, uh, forty-six, four forty-eight Park Avenue rezoning, um, I don't believe we prepared anything, but we are here if there's any further questions on this.
Great. And neither of those is up, uh, for vote on, on Wednesday, those will come, uh, down the pike, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there anything else on the list for today, Ryan?
There are not, there's nothing further on our agenda for today.
Okay. Well, with that, um, again, uh, happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays to everybody, and, uh, we will look forward to seeing you here on Wednesday. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you. Bless you.